Thank you. We're going to call this City Council Successor Agency to the redevelopment agency meeting in order. Would you please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jeff, do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
Just one suggestion from staff tonight, Mr. Mayor, and that would be, if you could help me out, which item, what's the item number under eight for the Holly Street?
Number seven.
It's L.
You're right.
Eight L.
Eight L.
I'd like the council to pull eight L off the consent calendar and if you're all willing, here it first up under the new business calendar.
That was the plan, but thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Any other requests from the diocese for changing orders of the agenda? Seeing none, we will have a report from closed session. We did meet closed session prior to this meeting. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the second closed session, item 3B, the council discussed the pending writ of review filed by PG&E of the California Public Utilities Commission fine of $14,350,000. And there's a pending petition filed by PG&E for writ of review, and the council has authorized the city attorney, myself, to participate in that litigation either by amicus brief or other appropriate document.
Thank you. Item five, council communications and announcements. Matt?
No, the only thing that I have to report is that I was missing Ohio, and so I ordered this weather special for today.
Thank you. Appreciate that. How long will it last?
Till tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Good. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report tonight because Mr. Grocott took care of the weather, so.
Cameron?
Nothing for me either.
Ron?
Well, I'll take up all the extra time then. I was just going through all the things that took place between the last council meeting and this council meeting, and I believe all of us were at the GESE community meeting, which was held on the 24th up in the library. It was a very, very good meeting, a lot of frank discussion exchanged, and I think it's always good for us to come to as many of these meetings as we can so we can understand what the issues are for the people that we serve. Also went on the next day to a Grand Boulevard Task Force meeting that I've been appointed to, and the same day was a Hartboard meeting. And I believe we also appointed three new commissioners to the Economic Development Advisory Commission the following day after that. And the only other item I have is that I now have a daughter that's married.
Is she out of the house?
Oh, she's out of the house.
And a pocketbook, and a pocketbook that's much lighter, right?
Oh, yes.
A good time was had by all, I'm sure. All right. Jeff, any staff comments on administrative business?
No staff comments this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. That brings us to item six, which is council presentations and appointments, or appointments and presentations. First up is 6A, presentation from City of Half Moon Bay Vice Mayor Marina Fraser on appreciation of shared recreation program services. Marina, welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mayor Olbert, City Manager Maltby, I'm very happy to be here, especially since I beat coming over because 92 was closed, so I came over early. But one of the real things that I'm over here is to honor and present to you a collaboration that you helped the City of Half Moon Bay out regards with recreation. Several years ago, and Councilmember Griselli and Grocott know that City of Half Moon Bay was going through some really tough times with a lawsuit and then the recession, and we were giving up managing our recreation. And I have to tell you, it was, I often talk about, we meet at Council of Cities for the public edification. This is a once-a-month meeting that all the council members in the county get together to talk about different things. And it was a conversation that former Mayor Randy Royce and I had. He knew we were going through such tough times, and what can we do to help you out? And that's where the seed of recreation came out. And we would not, the City of Half Moon Bay would not have had any recreation services at all had it not been for your generosity in sharing your systems and your people and allowing us to do that. I know you didn't make a profit on that, but we appreciate it so much because we had programs that would not have existed. It was really, we were counting every penny. It's been five years now, and we're in an entirely different situation. We're able to manage our recreation, and our Boys and Girls Club is taking that over. But your staff was so generous in helping through that transition. I think it's a great part of the partnerships that we have in the county, but specifically the City of San Carlos stepped up to help Half Moon Bay out during our darkest hour. So if I may read just a couple of the wherethes of this proclamation, it is, "The City of San Carlos was instrumental in ensuring a smooth transition to new recreation services for the City of Half Moon Bay. Their professional expertise, continuity, and stability were several of the key factors considered by the city council when determining who would next lead recreation services in Half Moon Bay. Your staff had the quality of dedicated leadership and the vision of San Carlos to provide the citizens of Half Moon Bay and the coast side with recreational classes, camps, facilities, rentals. This was truly appreciated and valued by our youth and adults. City of San Carlos provided an amazing staff who are always reliable, helpful, insightful, hardworking, and considerate when representing recreation services to the entire Half Moon Bay community. City of San Carlos continually exhibited caring, professional, and positive services for the youth and adults, and always demonstrated a deep and abiding concern for the quality of recreational services as well to our community, and we are very grateful. So on behalf of the mayor, myself, and city council members, we offer our sincere appreciation to the City of San Carlos for their outstanding services to the citizens and the entire coast side community." Thank you very much. Mayor, may I present this to you?
Thank you, Marina. I very much appreciate, and all very much appreciate you coming over here, and this is a wonderful, wonderful recognition, and thank you for our staff. We're glad to be able to help, and you know, we have to watch out for each other and cover each other's backs. Thank you. Very, very grateful. Mr. Mayor, if I could just say one thing to Marina. Marina, while you were talking, I got a text that says Highway 92 is open again.
I'm the hall. Thank you.
Have a safe trip. All right. Item 6B, appoint recommended youth advisory council voting members for the 2014-2016 term and recognize retiring youth advisory council voting members. Christine?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Christine Bowlen, Parks and Recreation Director. I got a little choked up on the last presentation because I'm a fourth-generation native, saying Half Moon Bayian, had I stayed there. However, I moved over to the, this side, but anyway, we really appreciate that recognition to the city because we feel it was a wonderful effort in collaboration with Half Moon Bay. It's my honor and pleasure this evening to introduce Kristin Erbs. She is our newest employee over at the youth center. She's a recreation coordinator for youth development who will actually take this item. Kristin?
Thank you. Hi. So I'm fairly new working here and have had this wonderful opportunity of meeting our great group of YAC members. I'm really honored to have you guys here today and get this chance to work with you. Of course, we have gone through our interview processes, and we select the best of the best for our San Carlos Youth Advisory Council. In the brief time that I've known them, I've been overwhelmed with how impressive you guys are, really showing me the ropes as well, and with all of the huge accomplishments that you've taken on and continue to strive for, reading through your applications and getting to know you over these last few months. The Youth Advisory Council does a lot, including visiting a lot of our council meetings, staying involved in the community. They do a lot of volunteer projects. They put on our youth center dances, raise funds for donations throughout the community. They also participate with the Young Consumer Champions, which is their Gold Star of Approval to businesses in the community that are youth-friendly. Blood Drives are another big event that goes on that happened in the youth center that's put on through the YAC and some of our long-term members, and a whole lot of other cleanups and volunteerism, really reaching out to the community to keep other young people engaged in our civic government, which I love. So with that, I'm proud to introduce some of our new members here, so. If I could have all of you guys please stand up. Thank you. And if we can have our newest council members introduce yourselves one at a time. Start with you, Jake.
My name is Jake Kumamoto.
My name is Jake Kumamoto.
Welcome, Jake.
I'm Jack Carlson.
Welcome, Jack.
I am Kylie Jerome.
Welcome, Kylie.
Hi, my name is Ryan Berryatua.
Welcome, Ryan.
My name is Tiffany Chung.
Welcome.
And my name is Emily Hutcheson.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, technically you need to take a vote to appoint them before they can be sworn in by the city clerk. Thank you.
I would be happy to do that. I presume we need a motion and a second. Is there a motion to accept the appointments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second, any discussion? I'll just mention that I think it's wonderful that we actually have a group of individuals who are willing to pitch in to help their community. So thank you very much for being willing to make the commitment. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Olbert?
Yes. So Christine, do we swear them in at this point? Crystal will. Okay.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Thank you.
Extra points, actually, if any of you can quote parts of the California State Constitution. I'm just kidding. Would anybody, would my colleagues like to make some other comments? Cameron?
I just want to echo what the mayor said and commend all of you guys for getting involved in public service. I think it's really important for people your age to get involved. I think it's a rare thing, but it's important for keeping our system of government going. And I want you to know that, you know, I really, all of us, and I'll single myself, I want to make sure that our city is a great place for kids and for teens, and so I'm really looking for feedback from you guys about things that we can do to make it better, to make it more fun, to make opportunity for kids to hang out, for kids to learn, to build teamwork and that kind of stuff. So if you ever have any ideas, please send them my way. But thanks again for getting involved.
Is it on?
Yeah, barely.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll just project. We also want to recognize and honor the outgoing members of the Youth Advisory Council who have done such an outstanding job of helping the youth in our community enjoy the services that we have and run the programs that we have. So I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to Alex Kumamoto. I don't think it's working. It is working? Okay. I'm told this is working even though it's not. So Alex, thank you very much for, even though I can't hear it, I should say, thank you very much for everything you've done. Would you like to say a few words?
I would, actually.
Please.
Firstly, I would just like to thank the City Council of San Carlos for setting the tone and making this city the most youth-friendly city I've ever seen. We do a lot of correspondence with other city councils, and no other city has this much support for our youth and is disengaged in trying to engage the youth in public service. So we really appreciate that, and we hope you continue to do that over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, I've been told that the two other outgoing members who we also are going to honor tonight couldn't make it for scheduling reasons, but I do want to mention them because it's important that we recognize the service. So there's Ben Kusber. If you join me in applauding his service. And we'll make sure that the certificate gets to Ben. And Greg Acilian? Acilian? Okay. Okay. I believe that brings us to, thank you, folks. We'll give people a few minutes to clear the auditorium. That brings us to item 6C, present proclamations recognizing outgoing commissioners from the Transportation and Circulation Commission, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission, and the Residential Design Review Committee. Is there a staff presentation or, okay, we're just doing that. Being a commissioner on one of our commissions in San Carlos is often a thankless task because you have to put in long hours and deal with a lot of balancing acts of managing competing interests, and at the same time, you don't often get an awful lot of recognition for the work. So we're trying to correct that a little bit tonight. We do have some commissioners who are terming out, having served us faithfully and well for many years, and we want to do a brief recognition of them. Not all of them are here, but some of them are here, so as I call each one of them up or read their names, I'd like them each to come up. Margaret Pye, who's been working with us on the Transportation and Circulation Commission. So Margaret's been doing a really wonderful job for us on an awful lot of fronts, I think in particular with bicycle interests, bicycle issues. So we're going to, you know, miss having you there. I know my next-door neighbor, Jack Bumgartner, says that he's going to miss having you there as well. He used to be a colleague of yours. Would you like to say a few words?
No, thank you, but thanks very much for everything.
Well, thank you. Okay. Next up is Thomas Felidy, also from the Transportation and Circulation Commission. Thomas, again, you know, TNC is one of those commissions that I think people don't really understand the important role that it plays in terms of, you're the first line of defense when people think that there's something wrong with the traffic flows in town, which based on our last survey that was done, a lot of people think there are problems with our traffic flows in town. So would you like to say a few words tonight?
I just wanted to, thank you, yes. I'm glad that our item is coming up on the agenda first, and then the issue of Holly Street is coming up later because I plan to be long gone by the time that issue comes up here. It is one, when you say thankless, it is one of those things that does come to us with regard to traffic, and so I hope that the council will listen heartily to all the opinions that are expressed here tonight and come to the right decision on the matter. But it is one of those things that we had to do. I enjoyed serving on the commission for the years that I did. I commend it very highly to any of you who have not yet been on a commission in the city. It's one of the things I think that makes the city work the way it does, is that people are willing to step up and to donate their time and their energy to helping this government, the city government work as well as it does in this council, and the commissions that are still standing are great evidence of that. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. And last of our members that we're recognizing that are actually here tonight is Robert Farkas, who helped us out for many years on the Economic Development Advisory Commission. And Robert, one of the things I think we're really going to miss about your departure is your entrepreneurial vigor and perspective on fulfilling your role, because that was a very important addition to the complement of the skills that were on the commission. So would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
There you go.
So I joined the Economic Development Commission a little over six years ago, and I've really enjoyed serving on it, and I do recommend it, as a previous speaker did, for, to get involved in the city. One thing I've learned from it is the great quality of the city staff that we have and the great wisdom of the city council that we have. And so I feel like living in San Carlos is a blessing that we should all try to pay back in some way, and so thank you.
Thank you, sir. So as I mentioned, not everybody was able to be here tonight, but I do want to read their names, give them some recognition here. We obviously will get them the proclamations. We also have retiring Keith Tabachek from the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and John Seiling from the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission, and Robert Hudson from the Residential Design Review Committee. That's everybody. So I'll just close briefly by saying, as several of the people that came up here tonight mentioned as well, this local government business that we're engaged in really only works on the backs of volunteers at the end of the day. We have a very highly talented and very proficient staff, but that's only part of the equation that we need to make the community what it is. So my hat's off to everybody who has made the sacrifice of their personal time and family time to volunteer on behalf of the community, and, you know, for anybody who's thinking about it, it's a very rewarding experience, and I would strongly encourage you to look for a role to fill. Any other comments, or comments about particular individuals or in general?
I'd just like to add that I am very grateful to everybody who has served. I had the privilege of serving with Bob Farkas on Economic Development Advisory Commission, and I also served on Planning Commission. I know that both of those bodies and all the other commissions in town do require a lot of work, a lot of long hours, sometimes some late nights, depending on when they meet. And it's an important voluntary service to our city. I think it's really, one of the things that just makes us special, that we rely on our own citizens to volunteer their time and make the effort to learn the issues and study them and make valuable recommendations. So I'd like to thank everybody again for their service. We're better off for it.
Anybody else? All right. Then we will move on to item 6D, a presentation from John Ford with the Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance on plans to reduce traffic congestion in San Mateo County. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and present to you this evening, as well as to the people at home who are watching and the people in the audience, otherwise they might have scared off Half Moon at the end of that last presentation. I understand there's changes coming to your chambers soon in terms of design, and I kind of liken being here tonight to going to old Yankee Stadium before they started making changes there, so.
Yes, we're only that nice.
I will promise a brief presentation, just kind of give you an update on who we are as an agency, what we do, what our task is in the county, talk a little bit about the programs that we offer, give a little bit of background to the Bay Area Commuter Benefits Program, because I think that'll be of interest not only to the city but also to some of the people in the audience, and then save a little bit of time for questions. So I know you have a full agenda, so let's move right along. The Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance is what we used to be known as, and we'd like to be known at going forward as just Commute.org. It's always been our website, and it's kind of what we've become known as now, and we are the Transportation Demand Management Agency for San Mateo County, which will define what TDM means, but it's something that we're all very familiar with. Nobody knows what the acronym means. Put it pretty simply, our agency's goal is to reduce the number of single-occupant vehicle trips that take place through, within, or between San Mateo County and any of its neighboring counties. So our goal is to get people out of the cars, of driving by themselves. Couple of reasons we do it. One is to improve the air quality in the region that's produced by vehicle emissions. The other reason that's not on my slide, but it's very important, is the economic reasons for that. The more congested we are, the more difficult it is to travel through our county, to get to our county or to leave our county, has a major impact on the businesses that come here. Encouraging employers and commuters and residents to use commute alternatives, which I'll show you a little bit about later, and leveraging the relationships with the employers is about the only way that we can effectively, as a small agency, reach more and more people in our county. We're a joint powers agency. We have 17 members, which are cities, and one member, which is the county of San Mateo. So out of the, I believe, 20 cities in San Mateo County, 17 are members. Jeff G., the mayor of Redwood City, is our current chair. Elizabeth Lewis from Atherton is our vice chair, and Councilmember Griselli is your current representative to our board of directors. We have a supervisory committee, which is a little bit different, it's kind of like an executive committee, but it's made up of key city staff from around the county, and we have nine full-time employees in our agency. We're split into kind of three major areas, outreach, shuttle programs, and our commuter programs. So what is TDM? Transportation Demand Management. It's all of these things. It's encouraging people to use public transit, whether it's the ferry, a bus, a train. It's carpooling, not only to work but to school. Van pools, which are a major initiative, major way to get people out of there, driving by themselves. Telecommuting, if we can keep you at home one or two days a week, that reduces 20 to 40 percent of the traffic that we might see. Last mile alternatives. How do we get people from their home to the transit locations or from the transit locations out to their workplace? That last mile solution, that's part of TDM. Running shuttles. Not the long-distance shuttles, not the large buses that you see as you're going down Highway 101. As I drove down tonight from my office, I kind of lost count around 60 of buses going the opposite direction, which are a big part of TDM, because all those people that are riding those buses could just as easily be on cars. Bicycling. A major part of the TDM program is encouraging people to ride bicycles, either to and from transit or all the way to their work locations. And the final one is emergency ride-home programs, which is encouraging people to take transit, and if you get stuck, if you get in a situation where you need to get home, get to an emergency, get to something for your child or for your spouse, for yourself, you have an option to use a taxi to get home or get to the local transit station. How do we do this? How do we get people to change their mode? It's difficult. We know it's pretty easy to get behind the car and just drive yourself to work, so we provide incentives. We target commuters primarily. We offer one-time incentives. It's all done online. People can apply for these incentives, and hopefully what we do by introducing them to the options is to convince them that, hey, you know what? This might work in my life, and it's okay. We get free transit tickets to people. We can get people an opportunity to ride BART or Caltrain or use the ferry, and we provide tickets to that or SamTrans. Lots of different financial incentives for people to try this. But it's not, it's also important to understand that we also offer incentives to families that need to carpool to school or that would like to carpool to school. We know that school congestion is a major issue. We have programs that we can work with them on that. So between us and the Safe Routes to Schools, folks in the county, we do a lot of the school pool activities. That's a picture of one of our shuttles. They're not the big, nice Wi-Fi-enabled double-decker kinds of shuttles, but these are very effective. We run about 500,000 trips, or 500,000 rides during the last fiscal year, and these are people that are primarily riding, or taking transit to the last mile, and we're getting them out to their workplace. These are public-private partnerships, so we take investments from employers that aren't running their own shuttle fleets, that are partnering with us to take their employees from that last mile, from that transit station out to their workplace, or take residents from their local neighborhoods or where they're located, near work sites, and get them back to the transit locations as well. It's strong. Ridership's up 12 percent over the, in the past year. That's a large, doing a large part to the economy. It's also just because, once you get as congested as we are in the freeways, people are looking for those alternatives. people are looking for those alternatives. That's a picture of our website, commute.org. I recommend everyone at home and in the audience, take a look at it, get familiar with it. There's a lot of information there that's available for you to learn about how to make your commute better, a smarter commute in San Mateo County. And all of our incentives are located there as well. So, if you are interested in a school pool incentive, or a carpool, or you'd like to get some transit tickets to try a new mode, go to commute.org. At the end of every year, we just finished our fiscal year. As you have here in the city as well, we'll be producing a, an annual report. I'll make sure that Councilmember Grisilli gets copies of that, and they get distributed out to the council. But anybody in the audience or at home, we're happy to get copies of that out to you. And the more that you can help us spread the word, the better off we will all be in getting congestion relief. I have one slide here on the Bay Area Commuter Benefits Program, and this is an important program. It's a state legislative program that started on April 1st, and between April 1st and September 30th, all employers in San, in the Bay Area, and all nine counties in the Bay Area, need to register, if you have fifty employees or more, and provide some type of commute benefits to your employees. Now, it doesn't mean that you have to pay for your employees, doesn't mean that you have to subsidize them, but you need to at least, at a minimum, give them, the employees, the opportunity to set aside some pre-tax dollars to buy their transit benefits. So, it's big. This is going to be a real game-changer in the Bay Area. And when this legislation was passed, the Bay Area is the only organization, or the only area that raised their hand in the state to try this out. It's only going to be in place for a couple of years, and municipalities, nonprofits, for-profit organizations, everyone needs to do this. And it's going to be, as we said, a real game-changer. It's going to get a lot of people thinking about their commutes. It's going to give them better opportunities to use some pre-tax dollars to pay for their commute. So, it's going on, it's taking place right now. We are the agency for San Mateo County that's working with all the employers, which is a really large number of employers, about ten thousand in the Bay Area total. And of that, I think there's fourteen hundred in San Mateo County alone that are going to be required to do this, so we're working with them as well. So, that's taking place, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions for John? You've left everybody's, oh, do you?
No, I, I just wanted to thank John. I'm the one that asked him to come and make a presentation, and I, I think what, what the organization does, what commute.org does, Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance, I think it's called, is valuable. And I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of results we get from that new program. But thanks again for coming and making the presentation. It's important.
Appreciate that. And just as a quick side note, there is a survey that's underway right now. We're surveying thousands of people in, in the county. So, if you happen to be one of those people that gets a phone call, taking ten to fifteen minutes to help us answer some questions about what's going on in your commute, and how you, how you commute, what mode you use, very valuable for all of us.
Matt?
I delayed in asking, because I thought someone might, someone else might ask this question. But as you may know, we just had a pretty, you know, contentious or, issue here in town that raised a lot of awareness for people about things, particularly regarding our schools. And one of the things that was talked about is the need for our schools, parents and so forth, to do a better job of not having single occupant, or single child, single car arriving at, at school sites. So, do I understand you correctly that your organization will work with agencies and school districts and so forth to try and improve those conditions?
We do. We're not involved in like the capital striping and trying to draft that, those kinds of things. But we're, we're there to encourage both cycling and the carpooling component of that. So, we do work with the County Board of Education on the Safe Routes to Schools program. We're kind of a partner for them to, to make that happen.
Do you get to?
We also work with 511, and there's a school pool, carpool matching program that we work with as well.
So, you work at a higher level than drilling down to a single school district?
We end up coming down to the school districts and work with them as well. We do.
So, maybe there might be something that we could investigate, especially maybe starting with our two-plus-two committee, which is our two council members, two school board members, to get something going.
Happy to, happy to do so. And we're working with, there's another city north of you that had a very similar situation with a, with a school that was being proposed in an area where there was a already pretty severe congestion. We're working with them as well to try to come up with some alternative.
Thank you, John.
I'd actually also like to suggest that, that maybe you do some outreach, or we can have staff hook you up with folks at our Chamber, Chamber of Commerce as well, because, you know, the, the issue of trying to encourage carpooling is something that collectively is a responsibility of everybody. It's not just a matter, you know, the parent taking a kid to school is no different than a parent driving to work. They're both valid users of the road, and they have equal rights to be there, and so, everybody ought to pitch in. And so, the, the opportunity really presents itself to get the message out as broadly as we can.
I'll work with Dave. I know Dave quite well, so.
Excellent.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, John.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that brings us to public, item seven, public comment. These are for items not on the agenda. Do I have one other card? Yes, I do. And these are all eight L. Okay? So, these, as I said, are for items not on the agenda. The, for the benefit of everybody who will be making public comment tonight, we give each person two minutes to address us. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, we will often give you a little bit more time. The, we ask that you honor that, because we want to give everybody a chance to speak, and we want to make sure the council has time to be able to do its job. When you get close to the end of your two minutes, I will hold up a yellow card. When you get to two minutes, I'll hold up a red or pink card. That's to let you know that your time is up, and you should wrap things up. But for now, as I said, we have two comment cards for items not on the agenda. The first is Dave Bouchard, followed by Nancy Zeebergs. And apologies if I mess anybody's name up.
Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. With all the commendations and recognitions that have been going on here this evening, it's appropriate that I'm here this evening to talk about a very important program that's going on right here in our own area. It includes four chambers of commerce. It's, it's called Leadership Redwood City, Belmont, Menlo Park, and San Carlos. And I'd like to begin by asking your viewers here this evening, and those in the audience, a couple of questions. If you could discuss matters of importance with influential civic and community leaders in a comfortable, open setting, would you do it? If you could gain new leadership skills, valuable information and resources to help you on a professional, personal, and civic level, would you do it? And if you could identify yourself and your organization as a partner with your community, would you do it? Well, if you're ready to be more effective in your career and personal life, and want to make a difference in your community, then Leadership Redwood City, Belmont, Menlo Park, and San Carlos is the program for you. Now, in its 27th year, this ten-month program provides the opportunity for face-to-face meetings and hands-on workshops with experts and key decision-makers. In a dynamic session, in dynamic sessions held one Friday a month, from September through June, participants learn about timely and relevant issues of vital concern to their city, and learn how they can effectively shape the future of their community, their organization, or their business. Participants gain a broader understanding of their community and how it functions as they are introduced to influential community leaders, and they also acquire valuable information and access to resources to help them in their work and civic engagement. Each month's program has a different theme or focus, including government, transportation and housing, public safety, economics and business, education, sustainable communities, health care, and civic engagement. Individuals seeking to challenge themselves by becoming more educated and involved in their communities, such as serving on commissions with the city, city of San Carlos, are encouraged to apply. Enrollment is limited to about forty individuals, and the applications are due by Friday, August 29th. I also need to mention that there is a tuition and attendance requirement involved. For more information, please contact the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, or you can go to the Redwood City Chamber directly, as they manage the program for the four participating chambers. I have a three-fold brochure here that I'll leave with the city clerk. It's also available online, as, as is a lot of other information, both on the Chamber, San Carlos Chamber and Redwood City Chamber's websites. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Nancy Zeebergs, followed by Ben Fuller.
Good evening, gentlemen. I have to admit that I'm feeling somewhat conflicted about some of the changes that must take place in San Carlos for us to thrive, but feel determined to be as open-minded as possible. While we are facing the challenge of successfully guiding the inevitable-changing face of San Carlos and East San Carlos specifically, we all want to maintain satisfaction with our city of good living. Please allow the time for meaningful input and dialogue with residents by ensuring that adequate notification time is given to us when specific issues will be up for discussion or a vote. We have placed our trust in you, our elected city council, to permit and facilitate this. Consideration of different ideas and/or points of view can always and should be done respectfully and gracefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Ben Fuller. Hang on a second, Ben. I'd also like to remind folks that we do ask you not to engage in negative or positive feedback.
Ah, good point.
So, keep that in mind. Thank you. Ben?
Great to see our esteemed council members and staff. I wanted to mention a new program we have going on in Greater East San Carlos. We've changed our website. I was the guy who brought nextdoor.com to San Carlos, as Jeff will tell you, and set up the meetings initially, when they were meeting with another company to bring that. Nextdoor.com is now in 27,000 neighborhoods. It's a three-to-five-billion-dollar company. We are now launching a new type of advocacy system in San Carlos called greatereastsancarlos.org, and it, it has a few principal purposes. Purpose number one is to announce meetings so that we can quickly respond when not given enough time, or maybe not enough time is available, to situations that are happening on the ground. Thing number two is that we're able to quickly gather all the contact information of all of our members. And so, now, we've got this very large email list that continues to grow, and we invite all of you to sign up at greatereastsancarlos.org and get on that email list. And thing number three that the site does, which is great, is it actually publicizes a specific event. So, the next event after this one is San Carlos Hotels, and that's going to be a planning commission meeting in about four weeks. And we'll have all kinds of future events. We're able to bring our folks out and quickly mobilize and, and have this interactive process that Nancy was just referring to. So, I just wanted to say, we're, we're looking at a new way to maybe bring you guys on and be able, so you can be part of the discussion. We're going to have some discussions internally with the neighborhood about, can we include you in this dialogue as opposed to having our own private dialogue? And so, Cameron and I had a discussion, and, and I'd like for him to be the first guy on that list. And if, if I can get everyone open to it, then we'll, we'll be able to inform you as things are happening, and you get a sense of what's going on. Greatereastsancarlos.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right. That brings us to item eight, approval of the consent calendar. Are there any items that council members would like to see withdrawn from the consent calendar to be addressed separately? Everything else, we will deal with en masse without discussion. As Jeff had indicated, we are going to, we have already decided to remove item 8L, which is the adopt ordinance number 1477, amending section 1032 dot 170 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, parking prohibited times and locations. Any other items that people would like to remove? I actually am going to ask that we remove items J, K, and S. So, we have J, K, L, and S removed at this point. For the remaining items, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve items 8A through I, M through R.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you call the roll, please? Or is there an ordinance that we need to read there, Greg?
No, no, both were, both were pulled. I just was verifying.
Okay, very good.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to item 9A. Actually, Jeff, were you contemplating that we would take up the items off of the consent calendar before we, we get the report on Britten Avenue sidewalk options?
That would be the, the discretion of the city council in terms of J, K, and S. I was envisioning that we would take 8L as the
Right away.
As the new 10A.
That, that's fine. Then, well, I tell you what, actually, I'd like to do it before even nine, if that's, unless that's a problem. Just go right into it.
Up to the council.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with that?
Not at all.
Go directly into parking. Okay, so, we will bring up item 8L, which is the parking issue.
Can I do the other three at the end of me?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Jay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. And I'll have a short presentation for you tonight, and then be available for questions that you may have. And obviously, it appears that you have quite a bit of public comment, so. So, tonight's item is the second reading of the ordinance to increase the parking restrictions on Holly Street between Old County Road and Industrial Road. And tonight's action by the council would be to adopt the ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting. So, again, just a little bit of information about the Holly Street corridor. The unique lane sharing arrangement during certain hours, again, dates back quite a long way. We don't really have a, an effective date that we could find when that was put in place. But we do realize the full lane capacity of Holly Street is not being utilized during the current no-parking hours. And, and that at least is in part due to the lack of striping that's on the ground. The current signage is not compliant. The striping in the corridor needs to be refreshed. We have an annual striping project that we're planning to do more work than just this corridor, but certainly, this one will be, would be part of it. And so, we have the money to do the project. And there are bicycle access challenges simply due to the narrow lanes. So, the ordinance change that's needed is to modify the current parking restrictions that are listed in the municipal code. And we have an estimate of about 25,000 to do the work. It's included in an annual project, and we had introduced the ordinance to the council at your last meeting. So, the Holly Street corridor, some additional information, generated, or excuse me, it's designated as an arterial street in our city's general plan, which means it's one of the major streets that serves traffic within San Carlos. And as council may recall, back in March, when we had a study session on the Holly Street corridor alternatives, which were presented to the council as a number of alternatives that ranged from removing parking, adding striping for lanes, doing widening within the easements that are currently available, actually taking some right-of-way, adding bike lanes, all the way on up to a realignment of Holly Street. We had a great range of alternatives there. The council's direction at that time, and the emphasis was, that you wanted to have us work on ways to improve throughput before we would consider large right-of-way acquisition or changing the corridor in significant ways. And so, that's, that's what we've been looking at. So, the various alternatives that were studied in March, it's important to point out, they all included two full-time lanes, eastbound and westbound, as a means of improving that throughput. So, where we had shown the alternatives that had bike lanes, we were using two full lanes. And even into the biggest alternative, we still only used two full-time lanes in each direction as part of the project. We have not ever proposed the idea to expand anything more than that as part of the studies. Back in 2009, when the city was moving towards the, the work at the Holly 101 interchange, there was a series of meetings which occurred that evaluated many different alternatives for the Holly corridor and its use. Some of them involved trying to find different ways to get the majority of traffic in and out of town, instead of simply moving them down Holly Street. And as the council, back at that time, in January of 2010, moved forward with that, none of those different alternatives were, were moved forward for further study, but the focus was shifted to the interchange improvement itself, and the creation of a project study report, which was to go ahead and take care of the freeway and interchange improvements. The one thing that did kind of move forward was, as it's now gone into the East Side Connect Project, was the East San Carlos Avenue Bicycle Boulevard concept, which was to try to have a way to accommodate the cyclists as they would try to head in and out of the downtown, but not being mixed into the Holly Street traffic. So, again, the data that we collected, and this data was collected in October of 2013, it was a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day series of it was a seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day series of counts that were taken while schools in session. There were no holidays or anything other. We felt like it was a very typical week. And as we had pointed out, I had pointed out before, we felt like the volumes that we were experiencing throughout the day warranted the greater parking restrictions. And the information is available. We provided that to one of the residences last week in response to the GESC meeting. And again, our recommendation is to continue down this path where we would have the parking restrictions put in place. And it's based on the data that there is more use of the corridor now and a greater need to have two lanes available in each direction. And again, the example of the part-time lane, which has the parking Ts that will designate areas of parking when it's allowed, and then the white striping, which will designate the areas for cars to travel in during the times when parking is restricted. And as was pointed out, this is not an exact example that is directly relatable, except that the parking Ts and the fact that vehicles are parked there during certain times of day in what is otherwise a through lane. So, a little bit of history on the meetings that have occurred and, to a degree, have talked about parking restrictions. Going back to one of the first meetings that we had with the TNC after I got here back in October of 2012, we had a meeting where we talked about the possibility of striping Holly Street and consideration of increasing parking restrictions. And that was with the TNC. And they were generally favorable to the idea as others had, as they had come accustomed to the, excuse me, the congestion that is in the corridor and that's being experienced. Fast forward another year later, in September of 2013, we had another TNC meeting, and this was a meeting that basis of which was to begin to look at hiring a consultant to do some Holly Street corridor alternatives. And that was the basis for hiring Rajapaner Meyer and what ultimately led us into March, which was the Holly Corridor Study Session with the city council. And in October, again, we had further discussion at the TNC level, leading up to our March meeting. And again, as I mentioned before, that's when we presented a lot of alternatives to the council for their consideration. And then in May, the TNC meeting where we talked specifically about the Holly parking restrictions and the direction to go ahead and present that to the city council and increase the time when parking is restricted on Holly. And then the June 23 meeting where we talked about them specifically and introduced the ordinance. At each of the meetings, we used standard outreach practices. We advertised on the website. We used our e-notify. And for those folks who were interested in finding out about that information, it was available. That is a standard practice. At our March 24 meeting and the June 23 meeting, we also mailed postcards to adjacent residents directly so that they would get the extra notification about those meetings. So, all of these meetings had some discussion of the need to have two lanes in each direction. And the earlier meetings may not have talked about the specificity of how many hours we needed to restrict, but that came about after we had our October 2013 counts, when we went out and actually gathered the data. Felt like we could make a recommendation to the council that was based on some good data in that regard. One of the questions that's come up is, if we go ahead and restrict the parking, then how do we measure the success of that action that the council might take tonight? One of the things that we'll be doing is we monitoring performance of these new hours. We will be taking some additional counts to make sure that we're seeing, continually seeing the volumes that justify the no-parking, taking into consideration neighborhood concerns and specifically the Holly Street resident concerns about the situation as it unfolds, and measuring the throughput for the corridor as it goes eastbound or westbound. Felt that was an important consideration to know that if we're doing this, if it's working right or if it's just sort of like it is now, if there's no real beneficial effect to it, but there happens to be a greater impact, then council could be faced with a decision that may change those parking restrictions at that time. So, we plan to report back six months after the implementation if council goes forward with the action, so that we'll have a report to share with you and the community, and the council can make a change at that time. One of the other issues that came up as it relates to the expanded parking hours or no-parking hours is the ability for residents to conduct normal forms of business at their residence, especially such things as deliveries or contractors that have equipment that needs to show up and needs to park in the street and that kind of thing. Well, one of the things that we're prepared to do is implement a permitting system for that, those extenuating circumstances. And the main reason for that is so that we can know when the residents are having this work done, so that we can monitor the traffic performance to see what kind of a disruption it causes. So, that's something that my permit staff is ready to take on, and we have kind of a similar situation with what are considered to be the moving pods that sometime need to be placed in the street right-of-way. And we have residents come in to get a permit for those so that we know where they are and how long they've been placed. We get a better idea of that, and we can tell when there's traffic disruptions, if it's because of some particular thing that has occurred and not just a random vehicle breakdown, for example. So again, the bigger picture of the Holly Corridor improvements, the council has selected the Holly Interchange Preferred Alternative at a previous meeting. The signal optimization grant is getting ready to be implemented. We're working with our consultant and Caltrans staff to make the final arrangements for that. The restriping, we're ready to do that once council gives us the go-ahead. The Holly Corridor Alternatives, we will be back in the fall to talk about what the next steps would be in that regard for the corridor itself. And the Holly Street, San Carlos Avenue improvements on the west of El Camino Real, which we have some seed money that was approved in the budget, to begin to look at making some improvements there. One notable one would be activating the signal at Laurel and Holly. So, staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt the ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting and move forward. Then, within, between, say, 30 and 60 days, we would be looking to implement the changes, but after making sure that we had been contacting the residents, especially the folks living directly on Holly, to make sure that they knew the dates and the timing of the improvements that would be made. So, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to take questions if council has them.
Thank you, Jay. Questions for staff? Matt?
You want to go first? So, I have a couple of questions, actually quite a few. Some of them relate directly to the project and some are, you might say, broader, more general. But I'm asking them in light of how to take action tonight relative to restricting parking. The first question I'll ask is lane widths. The, once the striping is done, what is the width of the lanes? I guess they might vary a little bit, so maybe at the most choked point?
If I remember right, it's 10 foot per lane at its most choked point. At some other locations, it's slightly larger, but essentially that's where we would be.
Okay, so they're going to be 10 feet. So, we do, we've got 40 feet of pavement from, at the narrowest point, from curb to curb?
Curb to curb.
Okay. And then, in a situation like that, you know, people have brought up this thing about their driveway access. And I know, you know, there was talk about, at the last meeting, well, somebody can impede the flow of the two lanes and straddle the lane to make the turn. But if you were designing that type of situation, what would be the standard for allowing, especially in maybe a multi-lane condition, on a residential-style street, you know, designing a roadway such that people wouldn't have to straddle the lane, could be in the most right lane and turn into their driveway?
Most likely, we would design that facility for 11-foot lanes at a minimum and have a parking lane, which could be six or seven feet wide. That would be, that's essentially, you'd have a curb-to-curb width. That would be 44 feet with lanes and then probably six to seven feet on either side for a parking lane. And that would be in new construction conditions for a road of that type.
So, if you couldn't get, so if you did, in other words, Jay, if you did, say you had multiple lanes going in one direction, too, and you did those at 11 feet, but you didn't do the parking, you'd still have a constrained condition of trying to turn into a driveway?
I think you would, especially on the right side, yes.
Yeah, okay. components of the project, as I understand it, are threefold: signalization, restriping, and then the parking restriction, correct?
It's, those three things would happen more or less at the same time, but the signal project is something that is completely separate from the striping and resigning project itself.
Okay. Is it fair, I don't want to take up too much time for the count with the council if they don't want to hear the answer, but I'm wondering a little bit about the signalization and exactly how that, not, you know, every detail of it, but just generally, how in concept is that supposed to work to relieve traffic congestion on Holly?
The project is designed to interconnect the traffic signals at Industrial and Holly, at Old County Holly and El Camino Holly, so that traffic that's proceeding either in a westbound or eastbound direction, for example, westbound direction, traffic that's queued up and ready at Industrial and Holly, they would get the green light, and then that traffic would proceed through the Holly Corridor, heading towards Old County Road. And the signals between Old County and Industrial have essentially the same clock that would tell them, I've released traffic at Industrial, that traffic is proceeding towards Old County at some predetermined speed, which would be based on the speed limit, and it should arrive at the Old County Road signal. So, we want to see a green light for that traffic so that it doesn't have to stop and wait for the Old County Road signal to turn green. So, the idea is to get progressive movement from one end of the corridor to the other.
So, it guarantees a certain segmentation of the traffic, certain number of vehicles would be able to pass through. Once they've gotten through at Industrial, they would be able to make it through at Old County and El Camino.
That's the idea. And so, of course, there's always slight things that happen, you know, in real time. But the idea is that it would release, it would have enough green time to take that traffic and run it through the corridor.
Okay. I have some other questions, but I'll wait on them. I don't want to take up too much time.
Thank you, Matt. Bob, I think you had a couple?
Yeah, so, the permit system, how would that work? I mean, certainly, you wake up in the morning and you got a leak in your plumbing system and you have to call a plumber. You're not going to have a permit for it because the plumber's got to come out. So, somewhere, the plumber's going to have to park on a driveway or on a sidewalk or somewhere.
Right. So, if a plumber could park in the driveway, then that would be preferred.
Right.
But as soon as a resident would know,
Right.
Then, what they would do is they would tell the plumber, who they would have to come out, hey, let the city know that you're coming to an address on Holly Street, and then we'll have that. Essentially, we'll know about that at that time.
Okay. That one doesn't bother me as much as this one's going to bother me. I'm going to redo my kitchen. I live on Holly Street. Kitchens don't take five minutes. They take two weeks, four weeks, six weeks. God knows, it could take months, depending. So, you know, know the contractor's going to get it. Contractor comes in and gets permits to do the work. Will also get a permit theoretically to park.
We wouldn't allow, we wouldn't allow for a contractor to park for a continuous basis for months at a time while they completed their work. They would have to make arrangements to be able to drop off tools, equipment, and folks to do work, and then return to the job site to pick them up. But as we would try to accommodate the ones that would be short-term incidental-type repairs and improvements, that's about the best we could do, because the disruption of the traffic would be, the whole purpose would be defeated if we allowed for continuous parking in the corridor during the middle of the day.
No, I understand. I get, okay, then I'll backtrack to the other situation that I need some plumbing work done. I know it's going to happen. So, I come in and, let's say I'm just doing a new sink, let's just say. And so, I call up and I get a permit to do the work, and then I get a permit, or someone gets a permit to park, and let's say they're going to be there for four hours or five hours. So, that morning, there aren't going to be two lanes. Is that what you're saying?
Depending on time of day. And we expect that there will be some disruption of the lanes during the course of the day.
Right.
We want to know about this so that we can try to time it best so it has the least amount of disruption.
Okay.
Because obviously, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., for example, in the eastbound direction, that's going to be a significant disruption if there happens to be
So, basically, what we would try to do on these permits is basically say, folks, don't show up between 7:00 and 9:00 and 4:00 and 6:00 at a minimum under these new rules. Is that right? Is that about right?
Yes.
Okay. So, I can understand during the day, but I was thinking to myself, if he shows up at 8:00, it's going to completely disrupt the whole plan of what we're trying to do here. So,
Right.
Okay, all right. So, basically, what probably the permits would be, these temporary ones would be like between 9:00 and 4:00 then?
Right. And one of the other values of having a permitted system is so that if we have to, we can let others know via the website. If we know that there's something that has to take place and it's going to disrupt because it's going to take that right lane for an extended period of time and there's no way to avoid it, then we can get the word out and we can let folks know via the website, via however we would choose to do it. But traffic can be notified that way, too, so.
The only, the biggest one I would think would be a moving van of some sort, and that's going to take up the lane for more than, it's going to take it for a number of hours, so.
That's right.
Okay. I guess, could I ask one more question?
Sure.
If we rearrange these hours, instead of 7:00 to 6:00, and we made it in one direction 10:00 to 7:00, and the other direction 7:00 to 6:00, do you feel that would be confusing to drivers going, even, you know, they're in different directions? Or is that a possibility to do? And again, I ask this because you're more of an expert on traffic than I am. I'm not saying you're the expert, but more of an expert than I am.
The, I think the current system is confusing, especially to folks who are not particularly familiar with Holly Street. And so, I think the less consistent you have the parking restriction hours, the more confusing it can be.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions on this side of the dais? Cameron, Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Someone at a recent meeting mentioned that they thought in five years that we would take another five feet from each side. What would be the value of that? Would it be worth doing?
Well, you almost don't even get enough room to take, to add the parking back in that situation and still have the two lanes. It would be extremely tight if we were able to do it. I'm not sure that there is a real value in doing that, simply because we're trying to get two lanes through. And the five feet, if we take that easement on each side, we still would, we still would just have two lanes. And we'd have to try to figure out a way that perhaps parking could be added to one side, but not both sides. There wouldn't be physically room to be able to do that.
All right. Other people, we've all gotten the same emails, so, you know, these are just things that come up. Somebody mentioned, why don't we just do the restriping? What if we just did the restriping alone and leave the signs the way they are or change the parking restrictions a little bit? What would happen? Would that lead to more or less confusion?
Well, I think it would be equally confusing if we had just, say, additional hour or two where parking was restricted during the course of the day. We would have fewer hours that we would be able to fully utilize the two lanes in each direction in order to help the signal timing plan work at its most efficient. Again, that's part of what we expect, is that the signal optimization can work best when it has two lanes to flow traffic, reducing the line of traffic that queues up waiting at the traffic lights.
And I don't remember if you answered this exactly, but it was sort of Matt's question, was that if all we did was change the lights and didn't do anything about striping, didn't do anything about parking, and we just synchronized the lights, would, without making these changes, how much do you think that would improve traffic? Or because there's the configuration the way it is now, it would have less of an effect? Would it not be optimally effective? Or would it be, or would we be able, even be able to tell?
It would definitely not be optimally effective. I think you'd have a hard time telling, based on the fact that drivers now are really uncomfortable with the idea, in many cases, of driving side-by-side down a street that doesn't have that center lane on it, the white lane line on it. And so, I think we would end up with the current parking restrictions, but some value in the timing of the signals. But I don't think we'd get the corridor throughput that we would hope to get in, you know, in kind of our efforts to try to improve traffic in the corridor.
I know this has come up before and we've talked about it, but there's a lot of people sitting here tonight for the first time have had these questions and asked them of us. The concept of doing, making The concept of doing, making changes to Harbor or Britton have been brought up. What's your thinking on that? What are the issues surrounding those roadways?
Well, you're talking about improving the Harbor interchange and the Britton Avenue interchange to perhaps create full interchanges with access that could be, take some of the pressure off of Holly Street. And the difficulties that arise from that, first of all, the main difficulties that they, those areas east side of the freeway are not within San Carlos jurisdiction. And so we would have to be working with adjacent agencies. And in the case, certainly, of Britton Avenue, we have a preserve that's part of the Bear Island area out there, which is extremely tight against the edge of the freeway now. And so trying to build a full interchange out in that direction would be problematic at best. And so there are many challenges, but one of the things that we have done is we've asked Rajapon and Meyer to give us a kind of a feasibility look at both of those locations to be able to bring back to you in the fall as part of our further discussion on this. So we'll have some more detail on that, but my sense of it is that there's a great deal more difficulty there, trying to get the approvals that we would need for work at those locations, since primarily they're outside our jurisdiction.
Right. And I heard something about this, Caltrans has a restriction against interchanges within a mile of each other. Do those fall within a mile of the other interchanges?
All three of them would fall. You'd have Ralston, Harbor, Holly, and Britton, and then Whipple, all within a, within a mile of each other, as you would down the freeway. So it would be a tough sell to Caltrans, not impossible, it's been done before, but certainly that would be something which, again, is outside the city's control for approval, would have to be, they would have to be lobbied and convinced that these were needed improvements.
I would think not inexpensive either.
Not inexpensive, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. I just had a couple of questions here, and then Matt, I will return to you, because I know you said you had some more. The, and I appreciate you including some of the results of our earlier conversation about all of the results and whatnot, because I do think that's important. For the benefit of the audience, the primary discussions I've had with staff since the last meeting about this are ways that we could try and create some mitigations for some of the impacts that we would be creating along the Holly Street corridor for the residents there. And beyond the ones that Jay has already mentioned, Jay, have you and Al had a chance to talk about the idea of whether we could relax the zoning standards such that if people wanted to create, for example, an additional parking pad in their front yard, that they would be allowed, normally, currently, they would not be allowed to do that under our existing zoning rules, but we control that, we could potentially change that. Is that feasible?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And in fact, talking with Community Development Director Survey earlier today, we have a 20-foot width maximum that is currently allowable on a frontage, so the driveways could be expanded and a second pad placed next to an adjacent driveway. The main reason is because many of these are now single-lane driveways, so they're currently narrow, so the, we would be able to allow that expansion if it was desired.
Oh, I see, even under the existing rules? And of course, it would come at the price of people sacrificing some portion of their front yard if they were willing to do that. But it would create more on-property parking. The other, as I recall, the other thing I had bounced off you was whether or not it might be possible to put some kind of permitted parking, temporary permitted parking system in place for visitors from out of town to use some of the spaces overnight in L'Oreal Park, which admittedly is not, you know, immediately adjacent, but it's fairly close to the Holly Street corridor. Did you have a chance to research that, whether there's some feasibility about that?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that actually is up to the council. If you so desired, we could create a program for that. Again, part of it, part of me thinks the need for overnight parking may not be as great as parking during the day, because overnight, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM, cars could park on the streets in front of the homes. So it's possible. Now, that raises some issues with competing use at the park, simply because we have programs there at the existing building and the recreation programs. So, again, it would be something that the council would need to direct us to take a look at and see if there's enough space to allow that, and how many spaces might be available for it.
Okay. Thank you. Matt, back to you.
A question that comes up, and it's, it's in addition to the ones already had, because Mark asked the question about widening parking spaces for, in the driveways or in the yards. But what is the, maybe, Mr. Survey might know this, what's the typical setback from a home to the back of the sidewalk on Holly Street, either on the north side or the south side?
He's answering 15 feet.
So then that wouldn't work. A lot of those, if I'm looking at that correctly, most of those driveways are very narrow, and they just make it past the homes. And so if you were to try to put in a parking space, at least according to our current standards, it's 20 feet from any structure, say, usually it's the face of a garage, to the back of the sidewalk. The improved right-of-way, which is the back of the sidewalk, has to be 20 feet, does it, is that correct, Mr. Survey?
I think you probably are correct with that, council member, and I think one of the things that Mr. Walter didn't say in answering that question, when he said that with, you can do a 20-foot-wide driveway within the existing rules. Of course, council could also make additional zoning changes to allow you to create a paved area over the entire frontage of a home. That would be within the discretion of the city council, so that you had, you know, sort of sideways parking in your own front yard.
Angled or something like that, too.
Which, to be, that was actually what I was thinking. I wasn't, I wasn't thinking that you might be able to fit it in under the existing rules, but I figured, we set the rules, maybe we could make a mitigation.
So you're both correct.
All right. Could you just tick off the, I had brought up the last time about the possibility of reducing or eliminating during the day, instead of eliminating parking, we eliminate truck and bus traffic on Holly. Can you tick off for us what the steps would be for a project like that?
If the council wanted to eliminate trucks off of that arterial street, I would bring back to you an item that would essentially take that out of the list of arterial streets that is currently a truck route. So arterial streets are, they qualify as a truck route, so that as trucks need to traverse through the city, then they would be able to use those routes so designated. So what I would do is bring back to you something that would say, we would institute a program that would restrict trucks, through trucks on Holly, and then we would have to institute signing that would be coming from the freeway off-ramps, and certainly on the approach to the industrial signal, that would direct trucks to either, say, down to Harbor or over to Britton, or signage on the freeway that would direct trucks down to Britton, or cause them to get off at Harbor. So that's something that signage would take care of, but we would need to bring that back to you, so that that was something that we would have, as trucks no longer allowed on Holly.
During a certain time period, perhaps?
Could be during certain times of day, or it could be altogether. But it would never discount moving vans and such, because they can always come in.
Yeah, okay. So it's basically a signage project and so forth.
You asked about buses. You didn't...
Well, I threw buses in there, thinking, but probably buses aren't, you know, how often do we see a bus on Holly Street? I don't know. Maybe a lot? Okay, these guys are indicating a lot, so maybe...
So my question is, can we, can we do that? I mean, go ahead.
Yeah, that's a good question. Can we legally, are there legal hoops that we have to jump through to, on either one of those?
We could restrict vehicles of certain weight or length, or height, from being able to use that.
And that's our call as a city, to do such a thing?
That, I'm sorry?
That's our call as a city to do such a thing.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, well...
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, that's, it was a great comeback. The last question I have is this 30,000-foot, you know, flying in from 30,000 feet kind of thing, and you may choose to answer this or not, but I'm just, you know, trying to look at what we're trying to do, these little stop-gap things, and I'm thinking, sometimes it's good to step back and say, okay, let's erase the board, and kind of start over. And the way I would think of that is, okay, you're Mr. Traffic Engineer, I know you're our Public Works Director, but, you know, let's say you're, you know, Mr. Traffic Engineer, and we come to you and we say, "Mr. Walters, we're going to put San Carlos here on the How do we do our access best from the 101 freeway? Design our city for us. Would we make Holly Street the, you know, our gateway with residential, single-family on both sides, and so, you know, are we trying to correct something that should have never been done in the first place? Maybe we should start thinking a different way?"
From a SimCity perspective...
Yes, very good, yeah.
What you would, what you would not do is you would not design residential homes to front on a main arterial in and out of your city. You would provide frontage roads, for example, that could be accessed if you needed to have that area as part of residential development, but you would have that arterial be as free of intersecting roads or driveways, with the exception of signalized intersections at other key arterials. That would be the SimCity approach to doing that. Of course, the, you know, the reality is, we have the residential neighborhood well-developed and for a long period of time in this particular area, and there really is no other way out of it unless you change that corridor completely, and that would involve extensive right-of-way acquisition, or as was mentioned in the March meeting, the possibility that you shift the roadway south, and if you remove one row of homes, then you're able to provide a frontage for road for the other row of homes on the north side. But again, that still involves significant right-of-way expense if you were going to do it. And I'm not sure that there's any other way you can get around it, given the fact that Holly connects to Highway 101, and that's the major link that allows people to come into town. So there's, the ability to completely restrict that, I think, is difficult, in order to, say, wipe the board clean and have Holly be a residential street, much like other residential streets within the city.
Thank you.
Bob, I just had one quick question. If this is passed this evening, or something is passed, what is your timeframe for, let's just say, the striping?
I don't see us going forward anytime before 30 days, probably closer to 60 days. That way, we can make sure we get everything lined out, we have an opportunity to let the residents know the timing, and for the issues, and kind of getting ready for the implementation of it.
So we'd start in about 60 days?
That would be my target.
And the signage would go along with the striping? It would take about, what, a week, two weeks to do both those items?
Oh, it probably would just take a matter of a few days to actually do it.
The last part, though, what about the signalization? How long a timeframe is that going to be, do you think?
That's something which we've been working with Caltrans and the consultant, and they actually can go out and they can load this program into the signal controllers as a secondary program, have the current timing be up and running, and then basically turn it on when you're ready for it. And so what they would want to do is turn it on and then see how it works, make any adjustments that are necessary to it, before they would finally say, okay, we're good to go with this. So my sense is that probably takes at least about a week, couple of weeks, for getting any of the kinks out of it that might, they might not have predicted, as far as traffic performance goes.
So that would run, that would, we'd do that before the striping and the signage?
We could, it's not, like I said, it's a separate project.
So it's a separate, I understand, I'm just trying to do the timing. I didn't know whether it would take another month or two or three to get the civilization, or all this could theoretically, theoretically, just slide together, all three things would happen at once.
They could do that. My sense is the signalization will take place quicker, can be done quicker than what we want to do.
I thought it might be the other, so you answered my question.
Deliberately go forward with the striping.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other questions? Nope? Okay, we have, thank you, Jay. We have a number of public comments. As I was doing with the earlier round of public comments, I will call people up two at a time, so you'll know when you're on deck. And Ben, I'm going to start with Ben Fuller and Linda Corrales. Ben, since you're speaking on behalf of G E S A, I'm going to give you a little bit more time than the statutory, or the standard two minutes.
There's a lot at stake here for the people of Holly Street, and there's a lot at stake for the people of Greater East San Carlos, and all for one, one for all. So, first of all, I want to speak about Greater East San Carlos, then I'm going to come down to Holly Street. Greater East San Carlos is bisected by Holly Street. We all have to cross it every day. Putting a mega-highway through there is going to hurt the entire fabric of the neighborhood, not just Holly Street. And so, hearing about these people losing their parking is heartbreaking. Hearing about the quality of their lives going downhill is heartbreaking, and not seeing any viable alternatives being suggested is really unfortunate. I saw our respected City Works, or Public Works Director, go through sort of an explanation about the notification process, and there were a lot of words, and I understand that. The fact is, I didn't even know. None of us knew, and I'm not suggesting this was a means to an end, I realize everyone's really busy, but perception becomes reality, and when everything is convenient for you and inconvenient for us, you know, we become suspicious, whether it's justified or not. These folks are going to lose home values, they're going to lose quality of life, simple tasks like moving or having contractors come by are going to become really difficult. Getting a permit, I mean, are they supposed to pay for that, or is that something that's free? And what's the incentive of city when they have discretion as to whether to provide these permits to actually provide the permits? It sounds like another hand-waving gesture to me. You know, ultimately, the reason this is all happening is because we are the only game in town. Everyone is benefiting tremendously from us. We're like this money tree that people keep harvesting, and, oh, there's a soccer field there, there's a hospital there, with $600,000 to the general fund, I just learned today, thank you, Ron. There's many great things that can come from Greater East San Carlos, and it's sort of like a self-fulfilling prophecy, because this great new project that gets put right next to us, that has an impact on us, begets another great new project that has an impact on us, and so on, and so on, and so on. So, you know, I was just told by Jeff that this hotel thing is actually not what we thought it was, and the article was not really accurate, but we heard about a row of 13 properties potentially becoming rezoned for hotels, and that was going to happen next week. So, we realize that things are going to change, and that Holly Street, it is the only game in town, and I guess we're asking for a new game. And in particular, when we look at this issue of the parking restriction, that's really the one thing that I think we're talking about tonight. So there's lighting, there's the synchronization of lights, there's striping, and then there's parking. And I know there's some confusion around it, there may have been some existing parking restrictions. My only request to you guys is, let's go light, let's split the baby, Bob, let's find a way to, so that all these folks who are working so hard, and the rest of our neighborhood can live with this, because if we remain under attack, you know, it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. So we really ask for you guys to be creative here tonight and find a way to help save our parking.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you. Linda Corrales, or Corrales, followed by Salvador Flores.
I am a 20-year resident of Holly Street. I've been there, you know, moved in single, got married, and had my son there. He's grown up on Holly Street, and there's no, all the difficulties of living on Holly Street. I have met many of you, have knocked on my door, asking for our votes, and where we could put a sign on our street, because it's visible, going in and out. We, this week, between, well, my husband, have called several, all of the council members. We got one call from Mr. Collins, and I believe today, Mr. Growcock gave him a call. We haven't heard from anybody else, which is kind of disappointing. My main reason for being here, of course, is the fact that parking on Holly Street would be difficult for anyone living on Holly Street. I'd like to invite all of you to come and just try to get out of our driveways during, when there is a rush hour, in or out. I have been hit twice, driving into my driveway, only because I'm on the center of the street and making a right-hand turn, and cars are not afraid to use this right-hand side, they just go ahead and do it, whether it's striped or not. And in the case, my case, I've gotten hit twice. So, you know, it's just a difficult situation to be put in. I don't think anyone that does not live on Holly Street truly understands it. Like I say, I would invite all of you to come and try and get in and out of our driveways when there's traffic. And also, this idea about the permit during the park, if we were to... And also, this idea about the permit during the park, for if we were to have our parking taken away. The other day, I had to call AT&amp;T in the evening. They made an appointment for the next morning between 8:00 and 12:00. How was I supposed, would I get a permit for that? I'd like to know that. So if anyone can come up with a solution to that, let me know, because things do happen and we do have repairmen come to our houses. And besides guests and people that are out of area and don't know that you're not supposed to park there. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Linda. Salvador Flores, followed by Paul Maginetti.
The reason I'm here is just like my wife said, she's my wife. And unfortunately, I called you a few guys, or you, and neither one of you answered to me. And I see what transparent you are and how honest people you are. It's like at the beginning, when you come and knock my door and ask for your vote, and you didn't do it. Anyway, the reason I'm here is, like I asked my wife, say, I would like you to invite you to come into my house, to drive in, to go to west, to east to west, and try to my, my house. It's a night. All the time I come to my house, I receive a horn, I receive a finger from the driver, I receive any kind of insult because the people, they went crazy, driving crazy out to the 101. The same to the, to the gentleman say, it's very, very bad, the traffic there. Just only I ask you to be a little more considerate with us, the value of the house that they will be coming down. We have been living there for more than 20 years, and I think so it's not fair. It's not fair for my family. It's, we are afraid to walk into the sidewalk with the way that the people driving there. It's, you have to imagine, it's only one single line to go to your driver, right, driver. And you have to watch it for the, for the pedestrian because it's people who walk in and it's the, the car driving so fast and it's so difficult for us. So we don't ask you for too much. We ask you to, just Matt said, why we don't raise the whole board and we start for the scratch again and try to connect it, send the information to the resident, to the East San Carlos. And we are more welcome to give you ideas. I had a few ideas here with me. And I would like to share it with you guys, but I see you don't have the time for me. You don't have the time for the, for us to share and be a really good citizen of San Carlos. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Salvador. Paul Maginetti, followed by Octavio Jarra.
Thank you, gentlemen, for giving us the time to speak. In my occupation, I require the people come up with requirements for what they want to do, and then collect the data, and then arrive at a conclusion. To me, that's, this has all the hallmarks of the opposite, of having a conclusion and then looking for a study to come up with, with results to support that. And I'm sure one thing that was not looked at, this is from the general plan update of 1992, there's a Crestwood Drive connection to I-280 visitor interchange on-ramp. Would have allowed 3,000 vehicles per day. That would make a big hit in our, in our citywide traffic problem. The other issue is, it is not just inconvenient or possibly being hit while you try to go into your car. This is a paper from UCLA on the impacts, the air pollution impacts on infants and children. And I think the suggestion to eliminate commercial trucking from there is very appropriate, not just because of how much weight they have, especially if they have diesel. I would go a point further and say, why not have an HOV lane or electric vehicle-only lane to encourage people to use other streets? And also to work on this whole traffic issue holistically, rather than just try to, to try to, you always seem like you're behind the, the curve here, trying to catch up with promises you've already made for traffic that's going to come along. And we really are looking for some leadership here. We really need it, not just reactions to, to things that others may have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Octavio Jarra, followed by Eduardo Sempero.
Good evening. I think I'm going to sound a lot like a broken record. I've been here a few times regarding Holly Street. I've lived on Holly Street for six years. I've worked from home for the last three years, so I see every day what is going on on Holly, especially when I'm trying to avoid work at least twice a day. Anytime in the morning between 9:00 and 11:00, I'm running out for coffee. In the afternoon, I go out for a walk. And I don't see a need for there to be two lanes restricting traffic. Traffic, while it's heavy, it doesn't back up, you know, too far in either direction for the need, I don't see the need for two lanes. The real problem, from what I can see, is striping. You know, any, the unnecessary traffic is a result of people not knowing where to drive. And when you go down Holly Street, you'll notice the striping stops as soon as the houses start. And that's where the real confusion is. You have people taking up two lanes, people trying to get around. I think striping Holly Street would clarify for people and, you know, improving the signage so people know when they can drive where. I think that would improve things a lot. Unfortunately, those of us on Holly Street don't get the consideration one would hope from the drivers that, you know, for Holly, it's just a twice-a-day burden. You just, some drivers just can't seem to fathom slowing down to let someone that is obviously trying to get out of their driveway. I don't think giving them two lanes to take up is going to help that situation. You know, again, we're there every day. For most of you, I'm sure it's a twice-a-day nuisance more than anything. And lastly, it is disappointing to feel that this whole thing has been snuck, snuck in on some level. You know, as Ben mentioned, there was a lack of notification. I mean, today, I actually got a postcard from Caltrans regarding some work that's going to be done. I would have appreciated more of a notice around that. And that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Octavio. Eduardo Sempero. And Eduardo, I don't normally do this, but, or we don't normally do this, but I believe another speaker who had said they're, they were a little sensitive about their English speaking abilities has asked to give you their time. So I'm going to give you a little bit more time.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Major, council members, neighbors, today I'm here to oppose the parking restrictions on Holly Street, as you see on our gray shirts wearing today. Even though I do oppose the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM parking restrictions, I brought some city data and some pictures that will back my request for you to consider the need on westbound from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. I do agree with all my neighbors. I want to focus on this little piece. If at the end of the day, the presentation and all our arguments, you decide that we need to have the parking restrictions, I want to look at this as a second option. So do we need the parking restrictions on westbound from 7:00 to 9:00? Let's look at it. This is the information, the survey study Jay provided to me, I was that resident. Very hard to read when I was here the first time, so I enhanced it a little bit, just make it a little bigger. This is the eastbound, 7:00 to 9:00. This is leaving San Carlos. This is where most of the traffic happens in the morning. We are going to work, we are trying to get to 101. Northbound is the only access. And the circle, the red circle, we see that as the peak of the traffic, no doubt. We already have traffic, parking restrictions, that are not working very good. We are looking at options on the signal lighting, we are looking at the striping. So my point that I want to make today is on the westbound. So coming into San Carlos in the morning, 7:00 to 9:00 AM. We can see in the circle over there, there is much lower traffic than what we had on the way out of San Carlos. We don't have a problem. I lived there for six years. I've been watching the traffic, let's put it that way, getting in and out of my driveway. The south, the Holly Street, south and north residents, we have already compromised and we park on the north side. So 7:00 AM means like at 6:45, we got to get up and move the car. Where? A lot of us start working after 7:00 AM. So it becomes like, yeah, you can park there, but then what do I do in this little gap? This is the data, and I wasn't, I wasn't the one who collected, it was, it was the city. We have some pictures. This is from 6:25 and 7:33 AM, eastbound and westbound. They were just random days. I walked out in my pajamas and I took a couple of pictures. 6:25 at 8:00 in the morning. We have 6:25 at 8:39 in the morning. There is traffic, yeah, I'm not going to tell you there's not, but it's totally reasonable. And we have 6:26, close to 8:00 o'clock in the morning, 7:00, 8:00, a little bit later, at 8:49 in the morning, and 8:52. So I live in San Carlos, the city of good living. I don't live in San Francisco. I have parking, I can run my errands, I can have somebody fixing my toilet, my TV, my washer that I'm going to have on Tuesday. And I just don't want to lose my parking. This is, this is why we move out of the city and move into better places. Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo. And Gloria Parker, I just want to recognize you, that's, I had given you her time, because she had asked to do that. So the next up is Peter Blanusa, followed by Roberto Parker.
Council members, thank you for listening to us. I, I do have a, a strong objection in terms of procedural ways that this has been conducted. I have received a card two or three days in a holiday week from Jay Walters, very ambiguous, very parking, Holly parking discussions or something to that effect, which prompted me to email immediately Jay. And I got a response that this is how this communication started, this is how I found out in the first place this has even been discussed. So all these other listings and dates that would say were never, our house was never notified. So procedurally, just from that reason only, I'm inviting you to withdraw your consent for this ordinance. I am in the process, actually, now of, of doing an addition to my home at Holly Street. I'm adding a 400 square feet, and I've paid over $6,000 in fees for, to the city of San Carlos for permits. I really appreciate you, you taking that, that, to task, the, the city staff and basically questioning the wisdom of these restrictions. But I can give you an example of, of dropping off, and I, I really think it's a disingenuous response from, for a public works person who deals with construction, and I deal with, I manage Stanford Construction as such. So I, I, I find it on a professional level in, unacceptable to assume that contractors can drop off things. I'm doing roof, and it's a hot mop, and you have to park.
Peter, please address us.
I'm sorry. And you have to, and you have to park the actual vehicle that will produce the roofing material that will be dumped into. There's always a main sewer line that I'm now replacing as well, connecting it to the city line. It is impossible to do that kind of work in, 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 in process of just like an, an hour or two. And not having ability to park on the street and work in that driveway area and replacing the main sewer. Does it mean we will never be able to replace main sewers and such? So I, I will wrap it up. I, I think we should focus on slowing down traffic on Holly Street, however we can possibly do that versus, because it is really dangerous in terms of turning, exiting, and such. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Roberto Parker, followed by Michelle Beasley.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, gentlemen of the council, fellow citizens, we, my family, are opposed to, to the way things are going to be done in our, in our street. We wish you to rescind the, the restrictions that you want to impose upon us until other avenues have been, have been actually thoroughly inspected. By the admittance of the gentleman that was speaking here, that was the engineer, he says that the trouble time was between 7:00 and 9:00 going east. Those were his words. Please take him into account. I believe that his time would be better off being used, I don't know his boss though, being used by exploring to open up the street, going straight through San Carlos Avenue, all the way down to the freeway. I don't know how valuable those two little buildings are in there, but I don't think that it's as valuable as the well-being of these people over here on our street. Please consider that. And also, then, what this gentleman mentioned, that there was an opening to 280 that was going to take a 3,000 vehicles off Holly Street, and maybe even more once the people get to know about it. Please consider other, 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 other alternatives. One more thing, I wish the city will consider also stopping calling an arterial street that are part of the city. It is actually a residential area, and it should be recognized as, as such. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and please forgive me, I don't want to be, I don't want to be subjugated. Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you, Roberto. Michelle Beasley, followed by Brett Stevenson.
I didn't put in my sticker card for this item. It's 10C Housing Element.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It got mixed in. So Brett Stevenson, followed by Rita Fasaro.
For those of you who voted yes at the June 23 meeting to impose the parking restrictions, do you really believe you made a well-informed decision to vote yes? Has city staff done the research on the possibility of a northbound interchange at Britton or Harbor? Not speculating, I mean, really talking to Caltrans to get a definitive answer. Some elected official must have thought Peninsula Avenue, the northbound interchange at 101 was a good idea, sandwiched between Third Avenue and Broadway. Is there in writing anything from Caltrans that indicates, sorry, city of San Carlos, you cannot do a northbound interchange at Harbor or Britton? On March 24th, we all sat in the council meeting and listened to the Meyer Consulting Firm report that the cause of the congestion was not Holly Street, but the intersections at Holly and El Camino Old County Industrial were the issues. Mayor, you commented that based on the Meyer Firm's presentation, Holly Street is not the choke point. Furthermore, the council, and again, this is in the minutes, directed staff to study and present on alternatives to improve throughput of the area and focus on improving the intersections at either end of Holly Street. Where is this report? I've checked the minutes since March 24 meeting, and I cannot find this report. Did staff present alternatives to the council prior to the vote last month? When making a tough decision, all most people want is a sound process and transparency from the folks making the decision and from the people being affected by the decision. Can all of you honestly say that the two months from March 24th to June 23rd was transparent? You know as well as I do that the process does not appear to be honest and open, and you can create resentment which leads to adversarial relationships. I'm almost finished. All we were asking is that you slow this process down, do the re-striping, synchronize the lights first, then include the residents on Holly Street. Explore all options to the point where you can deal in absolutes. Then people are inclined to respond in a reasonable way because their voice was heard. And we'd be more inclined to work with you moving forward. In closing, last time, we talked about having four residents from Holly Street present. I just would like the Holly Street residents to stand up this evening so you know who's Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brett. Rita Fasaro, followed by Nancy Zeebergs.
Good evening, council. Pardon me, I'm a little tired. You probably got my email last night. I wrote it quite late. I'm here to oppose this, or ask for you to rescind this ban on parking that you've put on Holly Street. These are our homes. This is parking in front of our homes. It, it's something that, that eats at my core every night. The pink elephant in the room, honestly, is, are you going to take our homes? Is that where you're going? And, and it's hard to imagine that this is not a step in that direction. So, you know, first, you wanted the trees, you know, now they want to suggest taking our parking, then our sidewalk, then, and it's, it's just not the problem. So I don't know if you all work here. I know, I know you work in this capacity, but if you work beyond this. I travel in traffic every day, every day 101. I'm stopped. Every day coming home, I'm stopped. And, and I watch traffic buckle up all the time. Improving Holly Street is just, is just going to make a bigger bottleneck. It is. It's not, it's not the solution to the problem. I heard a couple of really great ideas. I heard a couple of really great ideas. I wanted to comment. One of them is along the lines of Mr. Collins here. His way of thinking is kind of along mine. I do a lot of design work in my profession. And when I'm asked to approach and construct a new design of something, I implement changes one at a time. I know that if I implement two or three, I can't measure the success of any single one of those at a time. I have to, if I do all three, I can't measure all three. I can measure one at a time. I can collect data on it and measure its contribution. So, on a brief note and in closing, I'd like to talk about some of the things we do want so you can get an idea of what the residents of Holly Street feel. Signs, we want signs to say, "Watch for children." We want speed bumps to slow it down. We want the speed limit to be loud and clear. And we don't want any more bright neon signs signaling that, you know, that this is a freeway. We want traffic to slow down, not speed up. So, thank you for your time.
Nancy Zeebergs, followed by Aldis Zeebergs.
Good evening again. As everybody else in the red shirts has said, please do not approve Ornette's 1477. I was amazed and delighted to hear that the lights could be changed almost immediately. How long have we been asking for that? And it just seems logical that that would be the first step in looking at clearing out Holly Street. I've looked over many items from previous meetings, planning commission and so forth. And it came up time and time again that Holly Street itself is not the problem. It's the intersections at both ends of, on Industrial and Old County. The re-signaling would obviously be the first step to just looking at what would be the least impactful of the citizens of that area to try to alleviate and get things moving more smoothly. The lighting would be number one. Yes, the restriping, we've asked for restriping over and over and over again. And it does need to be there with proper signage as to when the lanes are available. But you've heard from the residents speaking of the negative effects on their daily lives as well as financially. And I have to add that I feel that anyone that has to basically eliminate any visitors coming to their property for all daylight hours during the week would obviously experience a diminished quality of life. The majority of us have moved to San Carlos, have chosen to live here for an enhanced quality of life. And that's what we're still looking for. I realize that on the east side... Okay. I would like to just say that we have elected each of you based on your willingness and desire to work for the betterment of life for your constituents in San Carlos. I ask for your compassion on this issue. Please allow the time for a step-by-step approach to solving the issue instead of immediately restricting the lives of our Holly Street neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Aldis Zeebergs, followed by Julianne Fasaro.
Good evening, gentlemen. I've spoken with you before. And I really do not envy your position because you guys are subject to a lot of verbal bad signage. So, and there's, you've got to remember one thing about that, what we're looking at is perhaps three dozen people in red shirts. And you saw the number that were on the street that is directly impacted. Don't forget, and guys, this is not a threat, this is just true. Each of these people influence dozens of others. So, if you're thinking of keeping this position that you have as a career, please think of these people first. Okay? The other thing I had when the guy was saying about the restriping, which I'm directly very, very much for, is the fact that I'm so tired, I've lived there for 40 years. That's a lot of going up and down Holly Street. I only live one block over. Going down to the freeway and then trying to go to the, going to the south and you pull over and there's some guy there in a truck that's blocking everything because the streets are not defined that you can go side by side. And as you try to get by him, he gives you the finger salute. You know, so what are you supposed to do? They just don't know. Not everybody is familiar with that street. The other thing that I want is, when the guy said the striping, he had it between El Camino and Old County Road. What in the world needs to be restripped there? Holly Street is the one that needs to be restripped. And the young lady here that said, "Let's do the step-by-step," is absolutely correct. You cannot figure out what your results are if you do them all at once. If you have a tree limb that is in your way, you cut off the tree limb. You don't cut down the whole darn tree. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aldis. Julianne Fasaro, followed by Brian Jackson.
Good evening, council. So, I just wanted to kind of reiterate some of the points that a lot of the people in the community made that I think just need to be stressed by the more people, maybe the more it's heard. But I think if anyone was to discuss like a developer's dream, it would be, "I would like endless money and I would like endless space." And that would really be great because I want to do whatever I would like to make it the most efficient for the community. And I think we would all agree for that. But everyone's talking about how this is a residential neighborhood. And the fact is, you don't have endless space. And even if endless money did come your way, this is going through a very important part of everyone's life. If you were to go, let's say, on Britton Street and I'm a business owner and you take away two out of my 20 parking spots, I'm irritated. But you know what? It doesn't really affect my business and my overall success. But people, I grew up in the city and there's a reason that people don't stay in the city. They come here because it's warm weather, it's a neighborhood community. My mom moved into the neighborhood and like everyone came with open arms. And it's a really wonderful, warm sense of a community. And actually, myself, this is where I hope to, you know, get married and start my own family. And so, it's really disheartening to hear all these things and especially when a permit system is brought up and it's, you know, brought up in the sense of extenuating circumstances, which is funny that it kind of casually falls into that overall blanket because extenuating circumstances are just life. And people coming over, barbecues, you know, throwing events, these are all just things that people enjoy and they thrive on. And it's affecting someone's livelihood. And it's really easy to look at all the statistics that surround Holly. Anyone that talks about Holly would agree. It's a huge cluster and it's a huge pain and nobody likes it and everyone wants it to get improved. I don't think there's anyone in this room that says, "Just leave Holly alone, don't do anything to it." People want it to be improved, absolutely. But again, really, really think about what the improvements are. And it's unfortunate, but you are going through a residential neighborhood. And I think what this council member said, Matt, about the fact that should we, this is a mistake that maybe should have never happened. And I think that that's a question we should all maybe kind of reassess and think over as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julianne. Brian Jackson, followed by Alessande Rozinko.
Good evening. I do not live on Holly Street, but I definitely support the not having the parking restrictions put in place. I'd like to know if there was a traffic study done measuring the number of, the amount of times that two cars were actually using the lanes when they should have at the peak times. I know every time I attempt to drive down Holly in the morning, mostly going eastbound, 90% of the time, there's one car. There's, both lanes are not being used. And if I attempt to use the proper lane as the signs indicate, I get honked at, yelled at, other various things. And it seems as though that was, that's the point in the traffic study that has the most pain point. And I think if better signage and striping and indications on that you indeed should use both lanes, I think the amount of traffic congestion in that area would go down. And I don't necessarily see it as a lot of traffic congestion, I just see it as a lot of traffic flow. Regarding the parking, I have a question for every council member. Would you want to wake up and move your car before 7:00 AM? My alarm goes off at 7:15. I don't know about y'all, but that's a little early for me to wake up and move my car. And I wouldn't know where to, I don't even know where these guys would end up moving their car. Because they can't move it to the other side of the street like they do now. Because I know currently, it's only, currently restricted on one side. So, you'd have to wake up at 6:30, go move your car and whatnot. But I definitely hope you look at the consideration. Also, I'd like to know if there is indeed was a study done measuring the amount of times that two cars were using the lanes. Is there a way to get that information this evening? Yes, no? No? You don't know? Is there a way? Was there a study done?
Would you address us, please?
Okay. I did, but you didn't answer my question.
You raised a question and if somebody on the dais wants to ask.
I raised a question if the traffic study that was conducted actually during the peak times and it used, actually calculated the number of times that two cars were indeed on the road.
Through the chair, I think we can ask that question of staff.
If, that's right. After a public comment, if somebody chooses to do that, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I'm sorry, what was the?
The answer is that if somebody on the dais wishes to ask that question of staff, now that you've raised it, they will.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Alessanda Rozinko. That's the last card I have, by the way, in case anybody else wants to address us on this topic.
Good evening, council members. My name's Alessandra Rozinko and I actually live up on Crestview Drive, as probably everybody here knows by now. But I have great sympathy for the people who live on Holly Street. I travel up and down on Holly, both during commute hours and during non-commute hours. And frankly, I have to disagree with your gentleman who spoke before. I do not see a problem traveling in non-commute hours up and down Holly Street at all. So, I don't understand the need for this parking restriction. Secondly, I agree with Councilman Grocott. This is a residential neighborhood and we ought to really be considering directing traffic away from Holly Street, not encouraging more traffic down Holly Street. And I have several suggestions. You could use signalization, for example, along Britton. You could increase the left turn lanes coming off of Holly Street to encourage traffic to go down Industrial and then up Britton. That is a larger street. It is able to accommodate more traffic. It's able to accommodate trucks and other kinds of things that Holly Street should not be asked to accommodate. And then finally, as somehow seems to be done up in our street, police officers can certainly be used to encourage those people who do not comply with traffic laws to do so. Frequently, maybe every other day, there's a police officer down at the bottom of Crestview making sure that people comply with the speed laws. And I would suggest that something be done similar to that on Holly Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Alessande. As I said before, that's the last card that I have. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this topic? Please come up. I'd appreciate if you'd fill out a card at some point.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here because I live in San Carlos for the last 20 years. And definitely, I have to explain that I have about three jobs at this time, two kids that allows me to move back and forth from my house, works in between shifts that accommodate so I can check on my boys. I had an accident. My car was totaled. I sent you guys an email the other day and I think you know who I am. I just wanted to be very brief. I think it's very, very sad that we don't have any options. I don't understand how come. We are in the Silicon Valley. We have ability to bring Obama here more than 17 years in the last eight years to collect for their campaigns. So, why don't we use that money to do other routes, to get into Britton, to get into Harbor? I mean, it's ridiculous. I don't understand. I'm in America. I'm from a different country. I came here because I was an adventure. And I love this place because we have a lot of freedom. Freedom of speech in particular and security. And I feel safe here. Just came from Mexico. So, let me explain you. I love this place. I don't want it to go anywhere. I choose San Carlos to grow my kids because there was a music program in the school of San Carlos when I arrived here. So, I think you guys have other options. Please address this and I don't think we should even continue talking about this. Because there's ideas about lights and this and what are we talking about in the beginning? We shouldn't even think or thought about this. All right? So, apologize, but my name is Elmina Galili. Again, I'm a real estate agent and I know a little bit about all the other things that are happening. And I don't want it to continue with this program, please.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to address the council? Yes? Again, if you please fill out a card, I would appreciate that.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Stogner and I've been a resident of San Carlos since I was four years old, so 60 years. And I would just ask to remind you that when you're talking about parking of somebody's property, you're really talking about their property rights and that you're going to be changing them. And I'm just a big fan of private property ownership. I'm a big fan of people that want to raise a family. And I think I heard some ideas tonight that I hadn't heard before about maybe changing the traffic pattern on that street. But I would just ask you to consider the, these are their, these people's homes. And it is a huge deal to say you can't park in front of somebody's home. So, I know you already know that, but I just, from a perspective of property rights, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Yes? Again, please fill out a card when you're done. Thank you.
So, I'm Julia Zaire and I live on McHugh Avenue. And one thing I'd also like to emphasize, aside from parking, is safety. And when cars are parked in a lane, people on the sidewalk are going to feel safer walking down that sidewalk than if there is no buffer between them and the street. And so, I think if we remove all of the parking during some of these time periods when there's less traffic, you're also removing a safety buffer for mothers and infants, for people walking their dogs, for nannies strolling double strollers, and for bicyclists who don't feel safe on the streets. So, that was just my consideration. I hadn't heard it before.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to address the council on this?
The young lady back there.
Please come up. Again, fill out a card, please.
Good evening to you all. My name is Teresa Mendeville and I've lived on Holly Street since 1990. And I really love the city. I, one of the ones too, that don't want to lose our parking spaces in front of our homes. It really would impact the quality of our lives. I'm thinking of the relatives or friends that I invite over to my house. And right now, they're able to park in front of my house. And that would be taken away. And I'm very happy that, a couple of things that are being done is the signaling and the striping. I think it's very important. I had three cars a few years ago, I'm sorry, three accidents that hit two of my cars within a period of six months. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to address the council? You already spoke, I think, did you not?
I don't want to speak.
Oh, you just want to present something? That's fine.
... All the Holly Street residents, I think we've got about every single one except one or two that are on vacation. And more impressively are the support of our non-Holly Street residents as well. So, we'd like to submit that for your...
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll add it to the public record.
Great. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this matter? Yes, please come up. And again, please fill out a card after you're done speaking. Thank you for your time. I just want to reiterate what everybody else is saying. I'm, my house, I've lived there for 20 years, almost. My house is the first house traveling east on Holly as you cross Old County. And it's kind of where everybody wants to speed up and get ahead of everybody. So, if you can imagine how many horns I hear per day. But just, I just want to, you know, I just want to break it down to a little city of good living is the slogan you guys have. If you take the parking away, you've ruined the city of good living for everybody living lives on Holly Street. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to address the council on this item? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for honoring both the time commitment and the cards. Very much appreciate that, as does the rest of the dais. So I actually have a couple of additional questions sparked by some of the comments that were made, so, of staff. So I'm going to just put those out there. So Jay, one of the things that came up here was the concept or the discussion of light synchronization, striping, and the no parking extension, extending the no parking hours. And those are all different prongs on trying to deal with the throughput issues, traffic issues. And clearly, some of the speakers felt that, well, why not do A before B, or B before C, or whatnot? So as I understand the interchange that you had with Bob when we were doing the questions before, essentially, all of this stuff, if we were to adopt the ordinance that's before us, all this stuff would more or less happen at the same time. I mean, the signalization would take a little bit longer, but it's all within the same rough time window. Which raises the question, do we need to do all three? And if so, you know, what's staff thinking behind, what's staff's thinking behind why we want to do all three?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. The data that we collected and the, our look at the data and the traffic signal optimization grant and timing plan that has been developed for this, in my mind, work together for the best benefit from a traffic congestion standpoint. Granted, all of the issues that have been raised tonight from the residents along Holly Street, they are impacted by increasing no parking restrictions. But the project has the best chance of working most effectively if we do all three at one time. I do disagree with the folks that have indicated that you can't measure more than one thing at a time as it relates to a change. I believe we can with the signal timing changes that we would make, and the striping and the signage changes that we would make, and the additional no parking hours. So they could be done together. I think that's the best benefit overall. Could they be done separately or one at a time? Yes, they could. And quite honestly, the signage out there is one of the worst examples, and so that really needs to be fixed. The striping needs to get done so that drivers can know their proper lane assignment. And I think the signal timing is best, it's going to have its best effect when we have these longer periods of parking restrictions where we can flow traffic through there more smoothly.
Thank you. My second question, actually, Jay, I think you can also handle. One of the speakers had brought up or re-d displayed the traffic count data chart that staff had presented, and I believe the argument basically was that going westbound early in the morning, that, with one exception, I did, I do recall seeing one of the curves there was actually above the, above the line that staff had drawn to indicate where there was an issue. But it looked like early in the day that there might not be an issue there. So I was just wondering, had that been considered in setting the times? And if so, why, why are staff recommending that we set the times the way it's proposed?
The traffic number itself is not significantly lower than the other time of the day, the 600, the 600, 600 line essentially that I drew across the graph. The numbers were in the 500 range during that 7:00, 9:00 a.m. period in the westbound direction. It is less than eastbound, definitely. We have directional peak hour traffic, for example, in the eastbound direction. It's heavier in the morning, going towards the freeway. But in the afternoon period, and even past 6:00 and closer to 7:00 o'clock in the evening, the traffic is heavier in the eastbound, excuse me, in the westbound direction as traffic comes back. So there is decided peaks of traffic, and so it doesn't exactly coincide. But my assessment was that the number wasn't significantly low enough to make me feel like we should have an extra couple of hours in there. Again, I was trying to, trying to create some consistency in terms of the hours. But there is definitely less traffic westbound direction in the morning period.
I see. So it sounds like one of the, one of the important factors is this notion of consistency.
That's one of, that's one of those factors.
Yeah, one of the factors. Thank you. My last question, actually, I think is Greg Rubin's question. One of the speakers had commented that impacting negatively the use, citizens, residents' ability to park on the street in front of their house was impacting a property right. And I think I know the answer to the question, but I want to ask anyway, just to be really clear. Is it, in fact, a property right?
Well, in this case, there is no right to park on the public right-of-way. All of the areas we're talking about in this proposed ordinance change affect just the public right-of-way, where the city has the right to regulate. And so the short answer is there is no private property right in the city's public right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the dais?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one. Mr. Walter, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Rubens, I guess. This ordinance, if, if, if the council said, go, to Mr. Walter, go ahead and stripe and go ahead and re-signal, do we need ordinances for those two things? The ordinance is only on the parking, is that correct?
The ordinance is only extending the parking restriction during the period of the day.
Right. So it's all, it's all about, the ordinance is all about the parking?
The striping and the signalization are not before you tonight, and they're separate issues.
Okay. And looking at the ordinance, I assume, and I guess I should have asked this a long time ago, I didn't see like a red line or a, we already have an ordinance set up for parking on certain streets and not other streets. The only change in this, what we're voting on tonight is for Holly Street, is that correct?
The, although the ordinance reads, it's before you, covers all of the parking restrictions under 10.32.170, the only change is to the Holly Street.
Changes to Holly Street. Okay, just so I can understand. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Discussion? Or, excuse me, thank you, Cameron. I will entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion, and if it's seconded, because we, that's the normal, just to understand, the normal procedure for Robert's Rules of Order is you make a motion, and then you discuss, as opposed to the opposite way. Correct, Cameron? Thank you. Even though, even though I'm Robert. But I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance, or I guess ordinance number?
1477.
1477. I guess I should read it to be legal here.
Actually, it's probably on this red thing here.
Okay, on the red thing? I've got it. Okay. Got my glasses? Yeah, I do have glasses.
Yeah. You just want to do the part that's.
And again, I'm doing this, I'm not going to decide if this, I'm not going to make a comment whether I'm for or against this, but I want to make sure we at least move it along here. Adopt ordinance 1476, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 13.08.16. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the next one, starting at 1477. I apologize.
It's okay.
I thought it was in the red. That's what I was, I'm sorry. Let's move back.
1477.
Okay, 1477, and I still don't know where the, ma'am.
It is, and what you want to do is, and ordinance, you want to adopt ordinance 1477, an ordinance of the City Council from there on out.
Okay. Thank you so much for putting these together. Please don't ever do that again, okay? Because I obviously got confused. So if we could separate out items, that'd be great. Adopt ordinance 1477, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending Section 10.32.170 of the San Carlos Municipal Code, parking prohibited times and locations.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Cameron?
So I'll just be brief. So I voted against the ordinance when it came up the first time, and I'm planning to do the same tonight. I do think that traffic on Holly Street is a significant issue for our city. But I also think that proposed parking restrictions create, you know, major impacts on residents. It's a, it's a pain to be constantly having to move your car and to have restrictions on who can park and et cetera. And, you know, I would be willing to consider that if I thought it would fix the problem. But I'm not convinced that it's going to fix the problem. I would say that the biggest problem is rush hour traffic, particularly in the evenings, and particularly westbound. And through the discussions that we've had over the last few months, I've become convinced, as many of the speakers said tonight, that the, the real problem is about a bottleneck at El Camino and at Old County Road. And changing parking restrictions doesn't address that. I think we need to look at that bottleneck, and we're, we are looking at it, and signaling will help. The other thing I would say is that these parking restrictions are focused in the middle of the day, when I wouldn't say that's the most significant traffic time, despite what the, what the data has shown us. And so, so my focus is really on trying to reduce rush hour traffic. Lastly, I would say, you know, because we have some strategies that we're going to try that don't impact residents, namely, striping and signal timing, we should absolutely try those first before we go forward with impacting residents. So, so my, my position hasn't changed since the last time, and I'm not planning to support the motion.
Thank you, Cameron. Others? Comments? Matt?
First comment is that, just like everybody else, we received a lot of emails, some phone calls, and so forth on this. And I just want folks to know, since I also voted not to introduce the ordinance to begin with, when I received your emails, I didn't necessarily respond to everybody. I responded to very few, because I figured, you're not trying to convince me of anything. You're trying to convince somebody else. So that's, that's why you didn't get much of a response from me, other than the fact that I'm really busy too, but my work schedule is just pretty crazy right now. But that said, I did want to comment a little bit on the process, because a lot of people mentioned about that. And I don't say this with any disrespect to our staff, I think they work really hard and try to do the best, but I also was a little surprised when we got this, because when we had the presentation on Holly, and I loved what that consultant did, just in terms of the, the thought process, the designs, and so forth, not necessarily that I would want to go for what the person was doing, but I just thought they did a really super job. And in fact, that's why I asked to have that same consultant look at our other big problem, which is, what is it, cordillaries running through the city. But we did ask to have the throughput looked at. I just didn't know we were going to look at the parking as part of that throughput process or as a solution. So it caught me off guard as well. Number two, I just wanted to say a word about experience, because some people talked about, well, you know, come to my house and so forth. For the first, I think it was about three or four years, I had a friend who lived on Holly Street, and I used to visit his house all the time. He lived where Brett lives now. And I know what it's like, trying to get in and out of the driveway, or anytime I would visit my friend Rodney, I would just park on the street, because it's so much easier to leave once you're, you know, if you, if you pull in, you're, you're expected to do something as a guest that you have no experience doing. You people live there, you have experience, you know kind of how to do it, but if you're a guest, you don't really know what you're doing. So I understand the need for parking on the street and that sort of thing. Now, the third thing is, you can thank me for bringing this up initially, because I don't know if staff sees it this way, but I was the first guy, I think, to say, hey, why don't we just get rid of parking? Who would want to park your car on Holly anyways? It probably gets hit, you know, more often than not. So it was me who thought of this, as far, from my perspective anyways. But y'all have changed my mind, because you came out, even the last time, the few people that came out and raised some issues about, you know, how this really works if you live there. I should, like I said, I have had experience with it, so I should have known better, but... Fourth thing is, I do think what Rita said about, you know, if you're testing something, I understand what the, our engineer is saying, Public Works Director, you can test the results with all three components, but another way to do it is do one component at a time and measure from each component of your test what the results are. And then you know that factor, what it's done. So I'm more inclined to stick with my vote from the last time and just go with the striping changes and the signalization. I'm really excited, actually, to see what happens with signalization, because I think it could make a huge difference. And my last comment is, I think ultimately, what we're trying to do here is put a gold ring on a pig's nose and call it good, and it ain't going to work. That's why I asked the question of the Public Works Director originally, if we were designing SimCity, as he put it, what would we do? Well, we wouldn't put, we either wouldn't put residential on Holly, or we wouldn't make Holly our main arterial from Highway 101. And I think we really need to look at that and go back and, and look at this problem and try to figure out a way to fix something that was done that shouldn't have been done, and come up with a really good solution without, as Mr. Stogner was talking about, in a different way, but without, you know, you people bought your homes there, you live there, it's your property. And to me, that always comes first and foremost, is the people who live in a situation, what's the effect of what we're trying to do to your lives? Because you've invested, and that's important.
Bob?
Two meetings in a row, we've had situations that affect a lot of people, and there, there are no simple solutions to this. People may think there are, but there aren't any. One speaker spoke about, oh, let me, let me back up for a second. People, I read every email that I got, and as Mr. Grocott said, I did not respond to most of them. I also listened to every phone call, and I apologize, I didn't call back, but I did hear them, and I do check. We have multiple calls and multiple emails, as Mr. Grocott indicated, and sometimes we're just not able to do that. But I want to assure you that I would imagine that every one of us pays attention to everything that we get in our email box or on our phone. But, and getting to my first comment, or my comment of not having a simple situation, one of the speakers spoke about endless money and endless space, and obviously, we don't have that. Interchanges, whether they are feasible or not feasible, cost millions of dollars. And, and we're not talking about 3 million or 4 million, we're talking about at least 10, if not even more, on all these situations. And they take years. And that's fine, and we can plan, and we can keep going, and we could keep moving on, trying to build interchange or do some other things. But I think staff, when they propose some of these items, is not just looking at the traffic that's there today. And I drive that, that road at least, oh, at least three to four days a week during the week. Not too much on weekends, but during the week. And I can tell you that it's, sometimes it's nothing, as in the summertime at 8:00 in the morning, there's a lot less traffic than there is in October, because I drive that at 8:00 when I drive down there. But it is an arterial that comes from the freeway into our town. I used to work on 19th Avenue in San Francisco. I don't know if everyone's familiar with that street. It's a major thoroughfare. There are thousand, well, hundreds, if not a thousand houses, maybe even more than a thousand, thousands of houses possibly, on that street. I don't know how those folks get out of their driveway. I have no idea. Because 19th Avenue has a freeway speed of far higher than this arterial that we have. It's a very, very difficult, I don't envy any of you folks trying to get in and out of your driveways at all. As I mentioned, staff, I think, is looking not only to the, what the situation is now, but we have a medical center that's opening, I think, in the next two to three months, followed by a hospital that will be starting construction in 2015. There is more traffic. I moved here 30 years ago. There is more traffic, not because there's more residents, there's probably a couple of thousand more residents than, literally, believe it or not, than when I moved here, but there is a lot more traffic. Whether people are going through, whether people are working here, whether everyone now has to have a car, and I think that latter part is somewhat true, as opposed to perhaps 25 or 30 years ago. Personal habits. We had this in the situation last time, with carpooling and other things. People pull off a road, and they've been doing it for years, and they take Holly Street. I know that when I pull off, I either go left, depending on the time of day, I go left down to Britton, or I go, if I'm going toward Belmont, I take a right and go down to Harbor and go that way. But I've had, I've had opportunity and experience in doing this. Changing personal habits is one of the hardest things that we have to do. We can't change personal habits. We can put signs up, we can put police officers at places. Trust me, personal habits are not that easy to change. This is a very difficult issue, certainly signalization, and certainly the, the lines, I think, are going to help an enormous amount. I'm still, I would still like to hear my other council members talk about ours if they want to do that. I hear, I've heard two already say they're not going for it. I would like to hear the other two council members. We're not allowed to speak about this. You may think we all sit in a room late, early on, and we all kick about, well, let's vote this way or vote that way. The Brown Act prohibits us from doing that. We, tonight, I hear from... We, tonight, I hear from Councilman Johnson and Councilman Grocott, for the first time, the words they're speaking. We're not allowed to interact like that. So I want to hear from Mr. Collins, and I want to hear from the mayor, and then I'll, perhaps the mayor may allow me a comment at the end to tell you which way I'm going to vote, but right now, I'm just making statements and trying to work through the concept of what we have to do, and it is an arterial street, and it will be an arterial street for the, at least the next few years. Maybe there's some way to change that. But for the next few years, it's going to be there, and there's going to be more traffic because of the development. So, anyway, my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming out, all of you who live on Holly Street. I don't envy you living on Holly Street. At this moment, I don't envy myself sitting here, having to make this decision. I've kind of gone back and forth on it. I know a little bit of the history. From what I've been told, our city fathers 60 years ago couldn't make up their mind because Caltrans came along and said, where do you want your exit off of 101? Because we're going to build a freeway. It was a four-lane, it was called Bay Shore Highway. Well, I guess our council couldn't make up their mind, so Caltrans said, we're going to stick it on Holly Street. So that's how it came to be. They didn't put it at Britton, they didn't put it anywhere else, they put it at Holly Street. So this is really, it's an arterial street that has a residential component to it. I realize that the section you're on is all residences, but if you look at Holly Street, start to finish, it's mostly an arterial, and it's a major arterial. It's the only way that you can go northbound if you live in town unless you go down to Whipple, or you go up to Ralston. Thank you. So that's what, to me, that's really what makes this very difficult. And I talked to Mr. Flores, I believe, and on the phone last week, and one of my first questions was, do you like the way it is right now? And he said, no. I said, well, what if we re-stripe it and do the parking? He said, I don't like that either. I said, well, we could take out your house, we could take out all the houses on the South Side. What side do you live in? He says, I live on the South Side. Well, I don't think anybody wants that either. My conclusion is that there really are no good options, and I'm, you know, I'm kind of at a loss to decide what those good options would be. Over the weekend, I took the traffic study statistics that were provided to us at our recent meeting, and I did my own analysis, put on an Excel spreadsheet, I added up all the numbers and everything, and then I looked at it, and I thought, you know, staff is right, at least in the eastbound direction. I look at the traffic numbers, and they're high all day long. There's, the only time they're below, 586 is at seven o'clock at night. Well, it's not a problem going eastbound, I guess it's seven o'clock. Westbound is at its highest point at seven. If we're going to do any restrictions, we ought to make it seven to seven, or four to seven, I apologize, four to seven on westbound. But we have to do something. I've heard over and over again that either by direct comment or inference, that doing nothing is not an option because we don't, we're not going to change it. We've had people whose cars are hit. I don't, no one likes that. But the traffic study that was done, it was pointed out to me earlier, was done over a seven-day period. It was during, when school's on, it was not on a holiday, seven-day period. There isn't necessarily a seasonal aspect to it. So it's a fairly good representative example. I just, I don't know how we could have changed it. One speaker brought up, you know, did you measure cars side by side? And I don't know how you measure that, but I do agree, if you don't put any striping there, then you're going to have people thinking that you're creating your own lane. So that is a problem as well. Somebody talked about, well, you're going to take five feet, and I realize that, you know, if this re-striping works, I think all discussions about taking another few feet are probably going to end. I think this is the alternative to taking homes out. But the basic issue is that this is a part of the city that's been a problem for decades. It was a problem 40, 50 years ago when I was a young child. It wasn't as bad as it is now. Mr. Griselli brought up the fact that there's more traffic now. Yes, there's more traffic here now, even though there's maybe 1,000 or 1,500 residents more than there were 15 years ago. That traffic's coming from outside the city from people who work here because they can't afford to live here. And I won't digress into my housing issues, but that's part of why we have the problems that we have today. And I apologize for jumping around because there's been so many things that I didn't anticipate tonight. But one thing I'd like to point out is that because I believe staff has done a lot of work on this, and because they said that we're going to monitor this change, I want people to get the impression that we're done with this. We do this change, and we're done with it. It's going to be monitored. Somebody asked, are the permits going to cost anything? What I've been told is that they would be free. If, I realize it's a, you know, small concession, but it's a, it's prohibitively expensive to do anything else. So like Mr. Griselli said, if you build a full, even if we had jurisdiction on Harbor, I think it's more like 30 or 40 million dollars, Bob. I really think it's, you're talking about very large numbers to do anything else. Now, having said all that, I don't feel good about this. I don't think this is the best decision that we can possibly make. I don't really know what the best decision we can possibly make is. But I do want to see how it works, and I'm not saying it's right, but if it isn't right, we'll fix it. So at this moment...
Okay, settle down, folks. Folks, settle down, please. Settle down. Thank you.
At this moment, I don't know how to fix it, other than to try this and see what happens.
Thank you, Ron. A lot of what I was going to say, various people have said before, so I'm just going to limit my comments. I do think it's important to recognize that, as Bob said, I want to reiterate, that a lot of what we're looking at here is not only the current situation, which is much worse than it has been in years past, and I've been a resident of San Carlos for 17 years, going on 18 years, and I've seen it gotten worse in that time, but it's also what we project to have happen. And personally, I would rather try and avoid, if I can, a crisis where we have to do something. I also want to reiterate, and I do not in any way, shape, or form mean this as a threat, like, you know, if you don't support this, you'll, if you don't support A, you'll get B. But I honestly believe that if we don't do something to try and improve the situation, one of the things that is going to come up is the notion of purchasing, buying out homes on at least one side of the street in order to widen the street. And, you know, it's, what I was struck by in thinking about all this is, you guys may remember, you were very well organized and very eloquent during the discussions about the transit village. And I know from my discussions with the G E S C board, one of the things that was a little frustrating was for quite a while, there didn't seem to be much traction with other parts of the community on the issues that were being raised. And at the end of the day, the two issues that generated, started generating some traction, which I thought were actually significant threats to the idea of doing the transit village the way it was originally proposed, were, one, the aesthetic impact on El Camino in terms of what it would look like with large buildings all up and down the street. But the other, which was far more significant, and was really the one that caught everybody's attention throughout the rest of town, was traffic. And that's because traffic is a really bad thing for most people. It shows up in all of our surveys, shows up in all sorts of anecdotal comments that we get from folks. And that's why we're looking at trying to address this. We are clearly going to be negatively impacting everybody who lives along Holly Street if this gets adopted. But that's why it's being considered. And as I said, I think the alternatives actually in the end are going, would be far worse. Bob, you asked a question about, you wanted to hear from Ron and I about, I think you said, hours? I've had some discussion with staff about this. I'm certainly willing to be flexible about hours. I am, you know, particularly on the westbound side. I am a little bit sensitive, more sensitive than I was initially, given Jay's comment about, there is a value of consistency, of not having, you know, different rules for different directions. Okay? So that leads me to be a little bit conservative in this instance, and sort of lean towards what staff has proposed here, which actually is in the ordinance, and then perhaps at a future date, if we see, well, maybe we really could relax it in one direction at some time, to consider doing that. But I'm okay with what's there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If we are having a discussion here and not just, I know we've all given our speeches, which is, you know, we're sometimes inclined to do, I just did the same, that as well. But in the effort of trying to change a vote here, somebody talked about history, well, two people talked about living here a long time. I've lived here a long time as well, and one of the things I remember is when the great separation went in, that was supposed to be the panacea for Holly Street, that you wouldn't have to stop for the train, you could go underneath and get onto El Camino freely and so forth. And that was done, and it wasn't the ultimate fix that it was put out there to be. And that's why I'm more inclined, actually, to, as Cameron talked about, I don't think this parking one side of the street or the other is really the answer. And that's why I'm more inclined to take it a step at a time. That's all these folks are asking for. They're not saying, I don't think, don't ever take the parking away. They realize there's a process, and we may get to that. They're not going to like it, but at least it would be a process that they could accept because they would know, they've been notified, we'll discuss it, and so forth. And I think there's another thing here that could be looked at. If this, if we voted no tonight, one of the things that staff could look at and study a little bit further is the option of, and this is to answer to what some people out here talked about, is at least if it were one side of the street part of the day, and then the other side of the street, the other part of the day, perhaps in a different structure than we have now with the hours, it is rather confusing, but at least if you needed to move your car, you could just jump across the street to the other side, and they would still have that option. I don't know, it just seems to me that we might be going a little quickly on this, and I think that's all that's being asked for, is let's go ahead with the striping, let's go ahead with the signalization project, let's hold off on the parking issue.
I do, if I can respond to part of that, Matt, I do take your thoughts seriously. For me, for what it's worth, and you heard the response to the question I asked Jay, but it was, it was actually repeating the results of a conversation I had had with him earlier as I was wrestling with this issue leading up to this meeting. To try and get the degree of improvement that we're looking for, there is a synergistic effect of doing all of these things. And that's why, I mean, I appreciate you making the suggestion. For me, that's why I don't support doing it piecemeal, because I am looking to staff, and they've convinced me that, with their arguments, that to get the kind of effect that I think, I think we need to get, we need to do all three. But that's me. Their opinions are different, that's why there are five votes. Any other comments or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask Mr. Walter one more question? Even though you did ask the question earlier, perhaps I can phrase it a different way. Apologize, Mr. Walter, to drag you up here again, sorry. Let's say you had, and I don't, maybe you can't do this, and I apologize if I'm phrasing it improperly. Can you rate or rank the three things that we're looking at, the striping, the signalization, and the change in the parking?
In terms of their contributions?
Yeah, in other words, if you had, you could only do one, what would you do? Or if you could only do two, what would you do? One and two, or three? And I apologize for putting you on the spot at this...
That is, that is putting me on the spot.
And I don't mean to, I mean, again, the synchronization, as he, as the mayor said, it could be all together, and in your professional, and in your mind, you may not be able to do that, and I don't mean that you have to, I'm just asking if it's possible to do that.
I'll answer the question by saying that it is my firm belief that the three together are going to give us our best improvement. However, if I was only allowed one, I would make the signal improvements. Because I believe that would be the one, if that was the only one I could do, I believe that would be the one that would give us the maximum benefit. But I do believe that all three together will give us more benefit even than that one.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Walter.
All right. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Mayor Obert?
Yes.
Okay. We'll give the room a few minutes to clear. Well, in fact, you know what, we'll take, we'll adjourn until five or 10.
You should be ashamed of yourselves, all you.
Ron?
Matt?
Sorry. Oh, that's fine. Jeff, I think the thing you were telling me about, I'm trying to think when our next meeting is, that it ought to be brought up as an idea.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow that.
Never mind. The thing you and I were talking about, never mind, I'll talk to you.
Did you want me to, did you want me to just expand on the previous item just a little bit?
Sure, yeah, if we can do that.
For the sake of the council and the public, which I think for the most part has left the room, but, you know, when the council, I can't remember who it was on the council who said, you know, the issue on Holly Street is organic, and it always has been, I've been part of this community for well over 20 years, either as a resident or an employee of the city, and I've heard Holly Street talked about probably every year I've been involved in this city. I don't think any of these solutions are the silver bullet any more than the grade sep, or, we're going to continue to talk, work with the community, work with our elected officials to explore ideas. One of those ideas came to me as we were talking tonight about this issue of parking versus this issue of taking out homes that we had the presentation from the consultant a couple months ago, and it occurred to me that perhaps the community might be willing to make an investment in parking on Holly Street in a different form than on-street parking. In other words, rather than take out an entire row of homes, or not do anything for, take out the on-street parking, what if the city were to purchase a home on each side of the street for the purposes of parking? So you took out the home, and you created parking lots on each side that would be permit only for the residents that lived on Holly Street as an alternative. It's just an idea, it's something that I'm going to ask the staff to explore so that we can continue to bring back new ideas to address the many challenges that the community has on Holly Street.
Thank you, I just wanted people to share that because I thought it was a, it was a very interesting idea, and it's also an example of the kind of thing that is really our stock in trade, which is, we have to make tough decisions on occasion, we look for mitigations. And I thought that was a reasonable mitigation to think about. Obviously, it has a price tag, but so does everything else. All right, gentlemen, we're going to make, unless anybody wants to register, I'll say, strong objection, we're going to make a couple of tweaks to the remaining agenda items so that we're not here too late, I do think we're going to probably run past 10:30. We're going to postpone 9A, the report on Britton Avenue sidewalk options, and based on Jeff's input to me, Jeff, I think you said we could also postpone 10C, the housing element, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that they would both show up at our meeting in August, which is towards the end of the month. So unless somebody has a strong objection to doing that, I think in the interest of time, we will move forward in that process. Okay, good. Let's go through the new business items, and then we'll cycle back to the agenda items, the consent agenda items that, I think I was the one who pulled off. So the first one is item 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the city attorney to jointly file with Pacific Gas and Electric Company, PG&E, a joint petition for modification or other procedural vehicle necessary to request the temporary pressure increase on line 147 up to 365 pounds per square inch gauge, PSIG, for the limited purpose of conducting inline inspection of line 147. Jeff?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jeff Malpey, City Manager. There are representatives from PG&E this evening who have a five to 10, and I've asked for the five version, presentation for you this evening on line 147. This issue before the council tonight is specifically related to the pigging project for line 147, as that process has moved forward, that's something that the council and the community have very much wanted, to have the line pigged, probed, analyzed, studied, whatever term you'd like to use, so that we have a understanding of the composition and condition of line 147. As PG&E has continued to proceed with preparations for that project, they're having to, as you're aware from previous reports, make some modifications to the line so that the probe can navigate certain sections of it, as well as getting permits through state agencies to do that work, that work's been proceeding. As they approach the actual date of putting the probe in the pipe and launching it to do the analysis, PG&E has explored a number of options and alternatives to the type of probes that they could put in the line, and have determined that, based on the size of line 147 and the overall topography and other reasons that they're going to be far better explaining than I could, they're going to need a temporary increase in the pressure of line 147, because it's the pressure of the gas in the line that propels the probe. And so without a certain pressure, they can't actually move the probe. But the probe's not drug through an empty line, it's pushed through a gas-filled line, and they can talk about the reasons for that. They've explored alternate technologies, and in fact, even creating some technologies. But moving forward, this is, this is, seems to be the best alternative for getting the pipe probed and analyzed in a reasonable amount of time. And so as such, PG&E is coming before you and asking for our joint support of their application to the CPUC to get that temporary increase in pressure, and I believe that the increase is 365 pounds, that's the required amount to put the probe through the line, whereas CPUC right now is currently operating, allowing the line to operate up to 330 pounds. So it's not a, it's not a significant increase in pressure, it's certainly not something we're thrilled about or would like to see, but relative to its overall operating history and our need to get these safety questions answered, I think it's prudent to recommend and jointly support PG&E's application to the CPUC. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have, but I think probably first we should hear from PG&E in their presentation, and then take all the questions you've got at the end.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, and what's left of the public, we'd like to thank you for your time this evening, for PG&E to come in and update you on our work to make line 147 inline inspectable. My name is Scott Hart, I am the local government relations representative for PG&E to San Mateo County. And I'd like to introduce our team, who will be taking you through our presentation, and we will make it brief, but want to make sure that we save time to answer any questions that you have. First, we'll have Vice President of Asset and Risk Management, Sumit Singh, and then Senior Engineer for our Transmission Integrity Management, Calvin Louie.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city staff, for giving us the opportunity to have a discussion and a dialogue here in regards to the proposal that's in front of the council here today. In the spirit of trying to keep this a five-minute presentation, instead of all the slides that we have, we're only going to focus on two slides. The first one, I'm going to quickly provide a quick overview of, and I will be requesting Calvin Louie, a senior engineer, to come in and talk a little bit about the process of inline inspection. A quick recap, some of the things that we've done to continue to ensure the safety of this pipeline, we've talked at length about the strength testing work, which really is a proof test to validate the integrity and the strength of the pipeline, which was conducted several years ago for the entire pipeline. We've also installed automated shut-off valves on both ends of the pipeline. The pipeline we're talking about is about a four-mile pipeline that goes through the city of San Carlos. The third thing that Mr. Malpey did a great job of articulating that is in front of the council here, is to send a internal probe through the pipeline to measure and identify any potential irregularities that may exist, a technology known as inline inspection, a widely-used technology within the oil and liquid pipeline industry. The fourth thing that we've done is we've actually enhanced the monitoring of the pipeline, and we actually get eyes on the pipeline twice a month to ensure that there's no potential third-party damage or potential third parties that are excavating around the pipeline, or any other integrity-related issues. So that's kind of the ongoing work that we've conducted and what we're planning on doing. Calvin's going to walk through the inline inspection process, but before we insert the probe in the pipeline, we have to upgrade the pipeline to be able to accept the probe. The technology, you know, came into existence after the pipelines were installed, obviously, so we research in detail the configuration of each of our pipelines to ensure we can successfully navigate and insert a probe within the pipeline. So the project that we're teeing up, which we're going to be mobilizing on August 1st, is to replace what we call a miter bend or a bend in the pipeline. Last time, we provided the city staff with an update, we were working with the California Fish and Wildlife Services to obtain the necessary permits. We've gone back to the drawing board with our contractors, and we've identified how we can go out and construct this in a most efficient manner so that we don't necessarily get caught up in that permitting issue, and we've come up with a design and construction mechanism to be able to do that. Tomorrow morning, we're going to be meeting with the Peninsula Open Space District from a coordination notification standpoint, and we're ready to get boots on the ground in terms of excavating, cutting that section of the pipeline or that bend out by August, starting the work August 1st, getting it done by September, so we can insert the probe into the pipeline. After that work is done, I'm going to request Calvin Louie to kind of walk through the timeline that you see here in terms of sequence of steps that we're going to take to clean the pipeline and inspect the pipeline.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. What I'd like to do is kind of walk through through the steps of typically what we do for inline inspection. Typically, this is a three-to-four-year process, and we've attempted to compress this down into eight to 10 months. Usually what we do is we'll retrofit the pipeline in year one, perform the inspection in year two, and then year three and then four, we'll do the confirmation excavations to validate the integrity of the tool and of the pipeline itself. But as you see illustrated above here, we've kind of compressed that down into the next eight months. And as Sumit mentioned earlier today, the first step is to perform a retrofit in the pipeline, we're performing a physical alteration to the pipeline to ensure that the tool can navigate through it. After that's complete, we're going to install temporary launcher and receivers at the start and stop of the pipeline. These are features to allow the tool to be inserted into the pipeline system so that it can navigate through and gather the data we need. At that point, we're ready for the temporary pressure increase. What this entails is bringing the pipeline up from where it's currently operating at 300 pounds up to 365 pounds. Currently on the market today, there's only one tool that can inspect line 147, due to the unique geometry, it's 20 to 24-inch. We need a telescoping tool that can both expand and can track when the pipeline changes diameters. So right now, the only tool on the market is this GEPII tool, that the minimum vendor requirement is actually 365 pounds, so we're trying to meet that. Without this pressure, there are some potential challenges we could encounter. For one, the tool could get damaged. Number two, the data is compromised at the slower, at the lower pressures, the pipeline just doesn't perform as well. You know, the quality of the data is a direct function of the pressure we can, the pressure in the pipeline. So we'll perform a temporary pressure increase, bring it up from where it's currently operating at 300 to 365 pounds, and we'll perform a series of runs. Each tool we put in the pipeline will have a different purpose, and they complement each other. The first series is what we call cleaning runs, essentially it's a foam pig, we'll put in the pipeline, and it's basically cleaning the interior of the pipeline. Even though we've done hydrotests recently on this pipeline and noticed that it's fairly very clean, we still like to have that foam pig sweep through the pipeline to clean out any debris that might be in there. As you can imagine, just for example, you know, over time, when you're welding on the pipeline, there's welding rod that drops in, for example. So the cleaning run will perform the subsequent runs to clean. After we're comfortable with that, we'll perform a geometry run. That basically is a tool that looks at the geometry of the pipeline, ovalities, any dents that may have occurred. If someone has struck our line in the past, that didn't report that, we can pick up these locations. The third and final tool we use is what we call the MFL tool. Basically, this is our high-resolution smart tool, so to speak. It basically has a magnetic field, it dumps it onto the pipeline, and it can record any kind of geometric and corrosion anomalies in the pipeline. And once that's complete, we send all that data to our vendor. Our vendor takes, basically integrates all of these data sets and performs an analysis for us of, you know, the pipe of these data sets and performs an analysis for us of, you know, the pipeline and where any defects could lie. That's typically a 60-day process, and once they hand that data back to us, we'll perform the third and final phase of our project, which is basically confirmation digs and confirming the pipeline integrity. So regardless of what the tool calls out, we'll need to verify and confirm the data that is provided. It's just basically a calibration effort at that point to make sure that the data, the tool reads out, is in alignment with what we actually measure out in the field. And subsequently after that, we'll basically dismantle the temporary launchers and receivers we set up at our stations. This is a brief map of how line 147 runs through the city of San Carlos. Any questions?
Thank you, Calvin. Thank you, Sumit. Thank you, Scott. And thank you, Jeff. Questions for PG&E or staff? Yes, Cameron?
So one, just one question, which is what kind of public outreach are we going to do? Is the public going to be notified of the pressure increase?
We will work closely with the city, but we, we will have our customer care group do letter as well as what we call, well, automated calls. And so to have the two, and we'll work with the city to have information posted on your website and through your social media as well.
So, and is that for people who just live in the direct vicinity of a line 147? Or is it, or is it also any residents?
Yes, at a minimum, it would be them. If we can work with the city, if they would like a larger, what we call, customer cloud.
And so the plan is if you, if you live near line 147, you'll get a letter and a phone call?
At a minimum, yes.
All right, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Matt?
I just would like to know why we need to take an action to buy in to what it is you're doing. I understand why you need to do what you're doing. It's interesting, your presentation and everything. And I understand the whole situation, but what I don't understand is why we're being asked to take an action to give, give the okay in a, in a formal manner. I could see it in an informal manner, and my concern, I'll put it to our city attorney, my concern is, we say yes, you pump it up to 360, God forbid the thing blows up, and we have liability.
Let me actually take a crack at that first piece, and then, Mr. Rubens, I'll let you have that opportunity as well. So the process that would follow next is, the California Public Utility Commission gave us the authorization for that 330 PSIG maximum allowable operating pressure. I think everyone's well aware of the discussions and the hearings that took place and the many different intervening parties and the workshops. So this would also require either, and I don't know the legal term here, but we would work through our California Public Utility Commission because we had an order that was approved by the commissioners of the state of California that have the responsibility to provide the safety oversight of the pipeline infrastructure. So really, the ask here is, would you and the city be willing to file in a joint letter or a request to the Public Utility Commission that PG&E is requesting an increase in the maximum allowable operating pressure? There's all the reasons why.
If I can interrupt, just to, because I think I know where Matt's going, and it's the same question, one of the questions I had, which is, the application to raise it to 330, we didn't sign off on, right? In fact, that was an application you guys made to the PUC, CPUC, without our, in fact, we were opposing it, as you recall. So why, in this instance, is it necessary for us to join you in applying to the CPUC? Why can't you just go to the CPUC yourself and say, hey, we need to do X, so we need to ramp the pressure up?
So, and that's part of the proposed next steps, right, which is that's exactly the course of action that we would be taking, that we would have to go through the CPUC.
Why do you need us to sign off? Mr. Rubens, maybe you can explain it. I'm sorry, I apologize. It's getting late. It's more than five minutes.
So, if, if I may, first, there is no requirement that the council do this, but as you recall, one of, one of the, one of the things we're trying to do here is expedite this, and PG&E has stepped up, you know, and we met with Chris Johns, president of PG&E, and so far, PG&E has been true to his word to us in terms of their desire to expedite this. As we go to the, as PG&E goes to the CPUC, we enter another phase where it's no longer the city of San Carlos or PG&E that are the decision-maker, it's the CPUC. And we know from our experience that the CPUC can be very slow to make decisions, particularly when there's controversy involved, and so we're trying to show on this very specific issue, a united front to encourage the CPUC to move as quickly as we can so we can get the test done, get it, get the pipeline back to 330, and get the data that we all want to see.
What about, because I thought it was, you know, it's very scary, but I thought it was a very good hypothetical that Matt was posing. What happens if something does rupture in the line?
Well, I think I can answer that one based upon my experience so far at the CPUC. And PG&E is a regulated utility. The city of San Carlos will not touch this line. All the work will be done by PG&E under the supervision of the CPUC. So I'm very confident that the city would not have any liability if, God forbid, some accident happened either during the inline inspection or as a, or in some remote way related to it if something were to happen. The, all where, all that the council's considering tonight is to provide some authority for me to sign this joint petition that's being proposed. I have not seen the joint petition. I'm going to be very careful about the way the joint petition is worded. There's some issues that I want to talk with PG&E about related to this. But this is just the authority to get the process started, really, to allow me to sign something. And you're delegating that to me and relying on, on my expertise as the city attorney to review whatever's being filed. If I don't like it, I'm not going to sign it, because I'm, that's, that's really where we are at this point.
So, in, and I think we've done this in other situations, in addition to assuming we adopt the resolution, we can give you advice, guidance from the DIAS that I would describe, for example, as saying, Greg, do this narrowly, okay, which I think you would do anyway.
Yeah.
But, so we can embellish the approval with stuff like that, right?
You certainly could. The, we would just either add something to the resolution or you could provide general direction to me.
Okay. Sorry to jump on that, Matt. I just thought it was a good question. I think several people have.
You're the only one I got.
Any other questions? Then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014 dash...
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos. I think, can I read this?
Yep.
I'm sorry, it's okay. Resolution this time, Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing the city attorney to jointly file with Pacific Gas and Electric Company, PG&E, a joint petition for modification or other procedural vehicle necessary to request temporary pressure increase on line 147 up to 365 pounds per square inch gauge, PSIG, for the limited purpose of conducting inline inspection of line 147.
I second.
There's a motion in the second. Discussion. Yes, Matt?
Myself, I'm not out of, you know, any, how do I put this? It's not that I'm opposed to it so much, but I'm not an engineer. I don't know about these things. I appreciate their presentation, but I don't feel confident enough, just because I don't have the knowledge to vote in the affirmative. So I'm gonna, I would either abstain or vote no, you know? So that's the way I feel. But I understand what we're doing is, in a sense, we're just going to the CPUC and then we're handing it off to them. It's their authority, but I still don't, I'm not an engineer. I don't know enough about this, and so.
Can I just add one point that it's, it's sort of historic having been through this? The reason, and staff can, can correct me or add to this, the inline inspection of line 147 is very important for us to determine what actually this line is made of. So I completely understand the hesitancy to having this, even a temporary increase in the pressure. But from staff's perspective, it's extremely important to know what this pipeline is made of and have every inch of it.
Yeah, I get that.
Determined what it's made of, see the, what the inside of the line looks like, be able to identify the materials that it's made of, because remember, the pipeline's not just one piece of pipe, it's, it's segments of pipe made of different materials along, along its whole four-mile length. So this, and because it's, because it's still under the supervision of the CPUC and their Safety Enforcement Division, although we have differences with them, they're the regulating authority, and they are going to independently rule on the request, because this is just a request. The city and PG&E do not have the power to, to do this without the CPUC's consent, because there's this other order that's in place that has a maximum allowable operating pressure of 330. So with it being a limited exception and for a very important purpose, staff believes that, that we are supportive of this so that we can get to the bottom of what this line's made of.
Greg, can I ask you just a brief follow-up question? My sense from the discussion earlier is that, in fact, were they so inclined? PG&E could file an application with the PUC to temporarily increase this pressure without our participation. The difference is, we believe by going forward jointly, given the history of the opposition between PG&E and the city of San Carlos, that that will tend to expedite the PUC's review. And so in a sense, our participation is to buy, expedite, expediting something that would happen otherwise. And that's in our interest, because the sooner we find out what that line is made out of, the better off we all are.
I think that's a true statement, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just, I understand all this. I understand the need. I want to see it done. I, I get...
This is the way we get it done.
Yeah, but, no, it's not. Here's the, because the difference is, we, we're policymakers. We set policy. We, we send things in a certain direction, and then other people deal with all the details. And, you know, you've said yourself, I'm not a traffic engineer, so you don't feel comfortable making decisions sometimes. I, I understand what the CP, what the PUC's trying to do, I understand what, what PG&E's trying to do. I want it done. I don't want it based, I, I'm not an expert in this.
We're not being experts. We're expediting. Otherwise, we'll never get it done. When do you want it done?
Here's the other way to do it.
Okay, tell me the other way to do it.
The other way to do it is let them do their thing, and then the city manager gives, or the city attorney gives a phone call to the chair of the CPUC and says, they've made this application, we're in favor of it, we just want you to know. But it's, it's not in writing, it's nothing. What we're doing is very official. What I'm saying is we could do something that's less official and perhaps just as effective. So, you know, it's, I'm not asking you to vote the way I'm voting. I made my comments to explain my vote, so that's it.
And by the way, just to be clear, Matt, my dialogue was not to try and get you to change your mind, or anything. I just, it looked like, it looked like, yes, you were, but that's not me. So, staff, looked like you had something you wanted to add.
I was just going to say, this is a, certainly, I understand the position that, that we're all in, and I think we all feel the same way, the staff and the council on this. You know, I hate this saying, but, you know, it is what it is. And, you know, what I was going to say is, this item, this resolution is an attempt to actually do exactly what you were saying, council member, because without some direction from the council, my direction from the council is, say no to PG&E, fight them. We don't agree with, you know, where we left off officially and formally is that we don't agree with PG&E on anything when it comes to line 147. And our, you know, we're needing and our desire is to cooperate in getting this done as quickly as possible, because I also believe that the council, as well as the city staff, as well as PG&E, believe that getting this done as soon as possible is in the best interest of the city, the residents, PG&E's customers, and PG&E. So, it's not a perfect situation, and I understand exactly where you're coming from.
Right, I think you said you had a question.
Yeah, just a quick question. Isn't this really the culmination of what we've been trying to accomplish for the last year? So it seems incongruous that we would get this far and then back off from the last step.
It is a critical step in the culmination, because what we've been trying to get is the data that is on the other side of this testing process, so that the experts at PG&E and the city's own experts that we've hired have the actual data to look at and, and say, now we know about every square inch inside this pipeline. So there will be no more debate, hopefully, once the data's in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comment, discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ober.
Yes. All right. Gentlemen, I, we're at 10:25. I would entertain a motion to extend our meeting for whatever the person wishes to suggest, but I think probably what about 15 minutes? Jeff? To, to 10:45? Think we might do that?
That, I think that'll be a start, yeah. We'll see how close we get. I think if we're not there, we'll be real close at 10:45.
I'll move that we extend the meeting to 10:45.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, go. Good evening, Al.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. As you know, the city has been actively engaged for the last 10 months in an effort to assemble and develop three properties in the landmark commercial zone at the northeast corner of Industrial Road in East San Carlos Avenue. The effort recently led the city to purchasing those three properties that you see there on the screen, and also partnering with RD Olson as the developer for a new hotel there. The process to develop these properties entails the developer and the city working closely on a development program for the site, leading up to a development and disposition agreement for the city council's consideration, and eventually to sell the property to RD Olson and give them the necessary entitlements. And before I go any further, I'd just like to introduce Dustin Schmidt with RD Olson, who's here to answer, help answer questions this evening, and Jim Simon is also here with RSG. It's in the city and the developer's best interest to enter into an agreement that defines the terms and responsibilities of both parties moving forward. The proposed memorandum of understanding is the first step, and it does just that. It defines the terms during the negotiation period and the responsibilities of the developer and the funding of not only their application costs, but also a deposit amount that the city can draw upon for the processing of the entitlements. The MOU also identifies important milestone dates to make sure that the project is on track and carried out in a manner in which the city is assured that the public is engaged in the development process and the planning work and the expectations of the city council. These include the development of at least a 200-room hotel at prevailing wage construction. The process to prepare the project application, all the public review, conducting environmental studies, and the terms and conditions of the development and disposition agreement could take up to 12 months to do. By approving the MOU tonight, the city is able to obtain RD Olson's commitment to proceeding with the project application, and also the funds necessary to start that process and to prepare the development and disposition agreement. Staff and RD Olson are ready and scheduled to kick the project off if the council gives us the approval of the MOU this evening. The staff report includes a summary of the schedule of performance, which anticipates that the city could consider the development and disposition agreement in 10 or 11 months, after which the developer would submit final plans to the city and receive building permits necessary to close on the purchase of the property by November of 2015. And we believe that in talking to RD Olson, that construction could take another 14 months after that. With that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt the resolution in the MOU, and staff and RD Olson, RSG are here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Questions for staff? Bob?
Al, in the, in the MOU, it says developer, et cetera, developer. Who, isn't that developer would be also owner with, of the, of the property?
Eventually.
Okay, eventually, right. So, and then if the owner, but the owner doesn't operate the hotel, and again, I apologize, I'm not into all these nuances, but just to make sure I understand, they hire somebody, a company, to operate the hotel?
That's correct.
Why would we have, why are we in 3B saying we're not going to do certain things relative to the operation of the hotel? The city will not be required by the city, or et cetera, et cetera. When, when it's, this is the developer... When it's, this is the developer-owner, why would we say, when it has nothing to, I mean, they're hiring the operator, I guess I'm confused.
We can talk more about that. So, this is about the union operation of the project, or the hotel.
I understand what it's about, I just-
So we've always said-
I'm trying to be a little bit more vague, but if you want to be specific, that's fine.
Yes, so, the city said in the RFP, and I think we've discussed this in the past, that the city would like this to be a prevailing wage construction-
Right.
-project.
Yes.
And that's as far as we've gone, and I think what we've heard from the hotel community, and RD Olson can answer this question for themselves, but what we've heard is that if it's other types of agreements, that it could, you know, make it economically and feasible for them to do that, and they wouldn't be interested in moving forward, and I think we heard that perhaps from more than one hotel company.
But my guess, my question is, so you put the operator, I mean, there's, this MOU is between us and the owner, but you're putting in things that are really directly related to the operator, and that's, whether it's this or whether it's something else, I didn't go through each paragraph, I'm just trying to understand the concept. Maybe Mr. Rubens can tell me, or whatever. It seems like we're dealing with two different parts here.
Well, I see your point, Councilmember Grisilli. I think the intention of that clause is basically saying, as part of the MOU, that we will not put a condition on the project to the developer, that that be required. It doesn't mean that, independently of a city requirement, that that couldn't happen.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm trying to understand, the difference. If we say we won't do it, and then, do we, is this our bite of the apple? And, I'm not saying I want to do it or not, but I'm just trying to understand why an operator is in here when the operator and the owner are not the same.
And, Mr. Mayor, perhaps I can clarify two things. One, this is not a contractual agreement. This doesn't obligate either one of us to these terms.
Okay.
This sets forth sort of the playing field, right? So, one option that the council has is to just take that out. Okay?
I'm not saying we should take it out, I'm just asking the difference, and in the DDA, I assume it gets way more specific.
Yes.
Okay. And again, I'll have the same question of, how do we, how does, and I apologize, I should have asked you this before, Mr. City Manager, and I did not, I'm sorry, this is something I forgot to ask you.
I, this question actually came up earlier, and Mr. Rubens, our city attorney, reminded me, and I had forgotten this fact as well, that this item specifically stems from a vote that was taken by the council in closed session on this specific item-
Okay.
-which is reflected in the language here. So this, and I believe it was a 3-2 vote.
Okay.
But-
All right, so that's fine, I just, again, I'm not trying to, Mr., or, I apologize, I've forgotten your name.
Dustin.
Dustin, I'm not trying to cause major trouble, I'm just trying to understand if there's other places in here, and I haven't read the entire MOU, or when the DDA comes in, how the operator, or the owner developer and the operator sort of work together on this thing, so. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that I-
Oh, that's okay. In fact, if, I may just, to clarify briefly for me, I guess, my, when I was reading this, Al, my sense was, there were things being spelled out here that the developer, that we did want to talk about the actual operations phase, because part of what the developer does at some point is to go out and find an operator. And so, defining some of those things actually defines the playing field of how they're gonna negotiate with the operator.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seve, sorry to-
No problem.
Go into the legality.
Any other questions for staff? Then, is there anybody who would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2014-.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, a resolution of the city council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Olson Real Estate Group, Inc., doing business as RD Olson Development, to acquire and develop the landmark hotel site located at 595 Industrial Road, 810 East San Carlos Avenue, and 850 East San Carlos Avenue.
Second. There's a motion in the second, discussion.
I just want to let everyone know, I'll be voting for this, but I reserve the right later on to bring up other issues when the development, as you said, the legal development agreement comes into play, so, because I want to move the process.
So noted, I think I would agree with you. All right, Crystal, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes.
Okay, that gets us to item, we're skipping 10C, to take up at a later date, or tabling, I should say. Item 10D, consideration of a resolution adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the local 829 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, otherwise known as AFSMI. Rebecca?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight, for consideration is the memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and the AFSMI unit. This group is comprised of 27 budgeted positions, including account technicians, senior admin clerks, assistant and associate planners, associate engineers, building inspectors, civil engineering technicians, public work supervisors and inspector, a fire prevention officer, recreation coordinators and supervisors, and the senior and the systems analysts. The resolution before you includes, on average, a 2.7% increase for all members of the unit. As noted in the staff report, the majority of the employees in this unit will receive a 3% increase in salary, in the first year, and a 3% increase in the second year. The city works toward keeping salaries within the average market position among comparative agencies. When the survey was done earlier this spring, it was found that some of the specific classifications or positions in this group were either over or under average. As such, some positions are receiving less than a 3% increase, while we have one position that's receiving more, and that's the fire prevention officer, to try to bring that position closer to the average. The fiscal impact of approving this contract is $175,000 for both fiscal years, and this amount has been factored into the budget that was adopted in June. A summary of the other key components are, it's a two-year term through June 30th, 2016. We've created a commuter benefit program to allow employees to use pre-tax dollars to pay for eligible commuter fees. We've extended the vision plan to dependents. The city will continue to contribute for the employee only, and any dependent coverage would be paid for by the employees with a 2% administrative charge. I'd like to extend my thanks to the members of the AFSMI unit for working with us to bring this contract before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions for staff?
Just, Ron. Silly question, but, when you said $175,000 for both, you mean a total?
Total.
Eighty-seven-five each year.
No, total for both years, both contract years.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Other questions? Anybody wish to address the council on this topic? I don't have any cards for it.
Could the young lady address the issue of pension liability in terms of what the, if there is pension liability, and if there's any unfunded pension liability, and if there is, how is that dealt within the city's budget? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Not tonight.
Only if somebody from the DIAS asks. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to adopt Resolution 2014-.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, a resolution of the city council in the City of San Carlos, admitting, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Carlos and local 829 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI.
A second.
There's a motion in the second, any call for further discussion?
Discussion.
Yes?
I intend to vote against this, and for two reasons. One is, from my experience, and I've shared this with you before, relative to, really my only experience with brushing up to the city, against the city, has to do with my business, and while it's a different item in terms of fees, the fees are to pay for the cost of city operations, and those employees that are providing the service. And I know from that experience, that the fees that my clients pay are oftentimes higher than what I charge for the work that I do. And that seems wholly inappropriate and out of line. And it shows me, I know it's just one example, but what it does show me, and I should say it's one example, but I've talked to other people about experiences they've had and so forth, government costs too much. Just overall, government is reaching the point, not just our government, not local only, but you put government combined, and it's approaching the point where it's at close to 50% of what we do as a nation. It's just simply getting too big at every level. I've watched it, just looking local, at our city, yeah, we've cut employees and so forth, but the costs keep going up, and when you look at the employee thing, it's not, it's hard to actually detect accurately, because we've farmed out our police officers, we've farmed out our fire department. But overall, it just is, it's growing and it costs too much. The second is relative to what the speaker who came up and asked the question, I gave you guys a chart, spreadsheet, and it showed, I gave an example of an employee starting with the city at about age 25, earning $80,000, starting salary, and being given a 3% increase, which is, this is what this is about, most of these positions, I think we were told, overall, if you look at the different, some were given five, some were given two, et cetera, it was 2.75? So my figure, in my chart, my spreadsheet, was 3% a year, on average, increase. And if you look at what we're putting away for retirement, at the new formula that's mandated by the state government of 2% at 62, I believe it is, and that person works all the way until they retire in that position, doesn't step up to another position, or get promoted, or anything, in that one position, and you are 43% short on what you've put away, if it's earned what the, what the CalPERS says it's gonna earn, which I think is, they're rating it at about 7%, I believe, right now, growth rate seven, or seven and a half. So every time we do one of these, we dig the hole bigger. And it's not that I don't appreciate our employees, or respect the work that they do, but as a policymaker, and someone who's in this position, making these decisions, I can't allow us to continue to make the hole bigger. We've gotta do something, and I know Ron said, "Well, we're following the rules," and so forth. I don't know what else to do. Actually, I do know what to do, because on my spreadsheet, if we put more away than CalPERS is asking for, that's one way, is to increase our own rate. But we've gotta do something, and definitely, the organization we're dealing with, if any of you read the newspapers and the conviction that, or the investigation that's going on with the head of CalPERS and so forth, we're involved in something that is, I think, just bad news. But that's why I'm gonna vote against this, because we're just digging the hole deeper.
Any other comments? All right, Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes.
Okay, I think, it looks like I guessed wrong, and we probably need another few minutes. I will entertain an extension. We still have the three items, they'll be quick, they'll be very quick.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I'm gonna take these out of order, since I was actually the one who pulled them, the three remaining items off, and some of them are much simpler than others. Let's do item 8K first, and I actually don't need a staff presentation on it, just having voted against the initial adoption, I want an opportunity to vote against it here, so I will simply entertain a motion unless somebody else wants to ask questions about the sewer rate change. Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance 1476, an ordinance of the city council of the City of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Section 13.08.160, sewer service charges and fees.
Second. Motion and second. I'll just, again, just to clarify, I'm voting against this, not because I don't think an adjustment's necessary, I just think the proposed adjustment is a little bit too large, that's simply it. Any other comments? If not, Crystal, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
No. Okay. Item 8J, adopt a resolution approving revisions to the city engineering standard details and design guidelines. I have just one question there, which Mr. Malphey actually, Jeff actually answered for me while we were on break, because I had asked him earlier in the day, where are the design guidelines that we're actually approving, changing, and, because it wasn't attached, and what he explained to me is, they are apparently scattered throughout our entire set of several thousand pages. So, I, that answers, that satisfies my question, I would simply entertain a motion on this, unless somebody else has other questions to ask of staff.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2014-.
AD.
Resolution of the city council of the City of San Carlos, approving revisions to the city engineering standard details and design guidelines.
A second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? I take it nobody wants to address the council on this, sorry, forgot to do that. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes. And that brings us to, I believe, the final item, 8S, adopt a resolution approving agreements with Willsey Hamm and Harris and Associates to provide on-call civil and environmental engineering and related professional services for capital improvement program projects for one year, plus four one-year options, in an amount not to exceed $2 million for each contract, and authorizing the city manager to approve task orders. The question I had here, Jeff follows on the discussion we had in your office earlier today, which I just wanted to get on the record, about how the actual control process works, in terms of the magnitude, because I didn't want people to think that we were giving you a $2 million blank check, to just go off and do whatever you felt like.
Right. So, just by way of background for the council, this item was on and approved by the council recently. Upon further review and reflection at the staff level, we felt it was necessary to bring it back, to put this cap in place, this $2 million cap. The cap that's being suggested reflects, and you guys can jump in and correct me here if I'm wrong about any of this, reflects public work engineering's analysis of what we would be spending in two years, in terms of implementing the capital budget that has been funded and put in place by the city council. So, all the funding and all the money that will go to pay for this contract is within the purview, the discretion and the approval of city council. What we're doing here, what you're doing, is essentially identifying two contractors that we will then utilize to do that, that work for various projects, when we need a geotech engineer, or we need the traffic engineer, or whichever, you know, specialty architect service that we need to advance the project. So, those contractors will be specified by the city council, we would then hire them to work on the projects that the city council has approved and provided funding for, and of course, you know, the major metric, if you're on city council, I would think, would be, are our capital projects being completed on time and within budget that the city council has approved? This approach is a very similar approach that we've used in other departments, to get this type of professional work and service done. It means we're gonna spend far less time doing RFPs, and constantly hiring consultants for each project, and rather actually getting the projects done, which has been, as the council is aware of, something that's been a challenge for the staff in the past, and has been something that the council has very much wanted us to work on. So, you know, this RFP was a competitive process, we've looked at it, these are the firms that we're recommending, and all the various caps are in place for the financial protection of the citizens of San Carlos.
Just a-
Yes.
-comment on this process. To me, I prefer this to going out each time, and then, like I've seen over the years, so often going, we go out to RFP, we go through this process each time, and it always ends up going to the same company. And, there might be good reason for that, but the appearance of that is some kind of favor to- often going, we go out to RFP, we go through this process each time, and it always ends up going to the same company. And there might be good reason for that, but the appearance of that is some kind of favoritism, whereas if you do it this way, it's sort of a basket, and you let them, you know, eat the fruit out of the basket, if you will, on a number of times, and then you get to a certain point down the road where you do this again, and maybe they, you know, that firm, that same firm doesn't get it, it just is a change of process.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014-?
81.
81, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, approving agreements with Wilsey Ham and Harris and Associates to provide on-call civil and environmental engineering and related professional services for capital improvement program projects for one year, plus four one-year options, in an amount not to exceed $2 million for each contract, and authorizing the city manager to approve task orders.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion of the second, anybody wish to address the council on this item? Seeing no call for that, discussion? No call?
Just clarification, each time a project comes forward, especially if it's over a certain amount, it comes to us and we get a second look at it.
Jeff, is that correct?
Well, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, yes and no. Certainly, if it's over a certain amount, and what's the amount on public works projects? Is it 175? Yeah, so, any significant capital project before it's actually bid for construction would be coming back to the city council, but for the design work to start on the project that you've approved, not, we would proceed with that, but the larger projects will have another step for the council to be involved in. In fact, several other steps in most instances.
Okay. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Obert?
Yes.
And with that, I think we have completed the meeting. We are adjourned.